Welcome to the August meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, well.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our meeting. And for those of you who are new to the procedures, the monthly meetings are divided into two parts. During the first part, we hold public hearings on the applications that have been submitted to us. We do this in the order in which they're found on the agenda. If you need a copy of the agenda, they're available in the little tray by our counsel's For each applicant, we will ask them to come forward and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. We'll then ask the applicant to give a very brief description of what their application is all about. Members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions about that. When the board has finished its questions, the floor will then be open to anyone in the audience that wishes to address that application, but you must address that application only. And each member of the public also has to be sworn in. Once we've finished the public hearings and they've been adjourned, we will then go on -- or they've been -- the public hearings have been closed, excuse me. We then go on to the deliberation phase. And during that part, there's no further public input, but you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. At the end of the deliberations, the board will vote on that particular application. For tonight's meeting, one of our regular members, Larry Sloman, is absent, and so the first alternate, Paul Lay, will be a regular voting member for tonight. If during the course of the meetings, there are any members that must recuse themselves, our second alternate, Phyllis Capone, will serve as a voting member on that application. Item number one, Mike Neshewat, 11 Spackenkill Road. Okay. And you've already been sworn in, so we can dispense with that, but if you'd just state your name for the record.
Ernie Martin, engineer sever for the applicant.
Okay. I believe the last meeting, we adjourned this so that you could submit a new drawing of the apartment in which what had originally been two bedrooms is now, as I understand it, one bedroom and a walk-in closet?
That's correct.
Okay. And let's see, was there -- were there any other items?
The license. I believe there was a question from the board regarding one of the items of identification. And I think we had submitted three, and I think with the license, there was some confusion on that. So tonight, the applicant did give me some new information. I can show it to the board or to the attorney, but we can make copies and present that for the file if you'd like.
Okay. So if you would just give that to our attorney, and perhaps she could just describe what that -- what it is. I don't know.
Sure, I can. We can also pass it around and then give it back to the applicant's count. But it's a New York State driver's license with -- for Mr. Neshewat, and it has a New York State DMV sticker on the back that has the new address. I think that's similar to what was in the photocopy from last month, but this is the actual copy of it. And the other is an interim driver's license that shows the residence of Mike Neshewat at 111 Spackenkill Road.
Okay.
So I'll pass these around.
All right. Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There were three items that were produced, none of which, in my mind, were sufficient to show occupancy. There was a tax bill that was paid by someone other than the applicant at that address. There was another utility bill that also showed it wasn't at that address. So it was more than just the driver's license.
I don't -- excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't believe -- there was some question on that, but I think at one time, after Mr. Neshewat bought this property, he put it into an LLC. It has since gone back to his personal -- in his personal name, and I think that information was provided to the board.
That's correct, but the other items that we requested were at least three items that showed some that he occupied the residence. The bills, the other things, the driver's license just had written on the back that he had a change of address. There was a bill that was dated that was -- didn't show that he lived there, and there was another document. So I think I wanted -- you agreed that the tax bill was paid prior to the change back from the LLC to Mr. Neshewat, so that quite clearly didn't show any occupancy. I think you would agree with that.
Okay. I don't -- I don't recollect it that way. I mean, the person has bought -- owned the property for about a year. He lives there. I mean, I don't know. I don't understand where you're going on this.
I would just note, and you can look at this in a minute, Paul.
Right.
The interim driver's license is dated August 5, 2016, so just a few days ago. And it has the address as 111 Spackenkill Road. So that strikes me as a current address, so I think I'm satisfied on that.
That is what the DMV has you do. They give you that little sticker, and you write your new address on there.
But the interim license is clearly printed by the DMV. It's not something that's been added on.
One of the issues that we had referring to the central Hudson bill that Paul was talking about, it was mailed -- and now this is June of 16, and it was mailed to Mike Neshewat at 3638 Albany Post Road, and that's the issue that we had with it. So if he was living at 111 Spackenkill, they would have mailed it there, I would think. That's why we questioned it.
Yeah, and my recollection was, I think I wanted some additional, something official from the Department of Motor Vehicle. If he could at least sign that, I suppose it becomes more official. But also, I suggested some voter registration cards. This is all you can come up with?
That's -- I mean, that's it. I mean, that probably the address on Route 9, I assume that's your business. I think that's his business. And again, this property was in his business name, so it's since it's been changed.
Well.
If you want to have him sign it and then submit it for evidence.
Okay. Let's see. Probably we should get a copy of that. I don't know.
Copy of that.
Yeah, the signed interim license. Okay, I don't think -- I don't think everybody needs one. We just need one for the file. Okay. Okay. Let's see. Christine, you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
Do we get a new printout, did you say, a new copy of the apartment? He's going to give it to you?
Yeah, in the packet, there should have been some.
Yes, yes. It's -- it looks similar. I mean, it's the drawing that was done before. And if you look on the second floor, what they've done is taken one of the rooms, fitted it out with shelves, and it's now a closet.
It's different.
Okay. Did you find it?
I do have it. Okay, thank you.
Here, I'll show you.
Mr. Chair, he has booked my copy.
Yeah, no, I have it, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got it?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I do want to ask this question.
Okay. Paul, any other questions?
I know.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. In an effort to try to move this along to a resolution, I've pulled out of the zoning code, the special provisions that cover any kind of an accessory apartment. And normally, these would be reviewed as part of a staff report, but there is no staff report on this one. So I want to take a minute, please bear with me, to go through these and to see if all of the criteria have in fact been satisfied. And if they haven't, then what it is, what in fact do we need? Okay, so this is a special permit shall be obtained by the owner from the ZBA for any accessory apartment subject to the following provisions. One, the apartment shall be clearly subordinate to the one family dwelling. I think that is the case. The number of bedrooms in the apartment shall not be more than one. Okay, we now have a revised floor plan that shows one apartment. Three, the floor area of the apartment shall be greater than 400 square feet. That has been satisfied. Four, the floor area devoted to the apartment shall not exceed 35% of the existing floor area of the one family dwelling. And I believe -- I don't have the numbers.
About 27%, according to the current plans.
That has been satisfied, okay. Five, the apartment and one family dwelling must have safe and proper means of entrance clearly marked for the purpose of emergency services and with proper fire separation between the units. And we've visited the site, and the entrances are clear. Six, if the water supply is from a private source, but I believe it's on town.
Town water.
Okay. Seven, the applicant or his or her agent self-certified that the sewage disposal system, I believe, are on town sewer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Eight, no special use permit for an apartment shall be granted in any case where the Dutch Health Department has -- okay, this doesn't apply because there's not a septic system. Okay, nine, let's see. Site plan approval by the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board shall not apply to special use permits under this section unless the zoning board of appeals directs that. And because of its complexity or other unusual circumstances, I don't believe there's ever -- that we've needed to do that. Ten, stairways leading to any floor or story above the first floor should be located within the walls of the building wherever practical. Okay, there are no external stairs, so that's okay. Eleven, adequate off-street parking shall be in accordance with Section 21092, and shall be on the parcel on which the accessory apartment is located. To the maximum extent possible, off-street parking shall not occur in the front yard of the premises. In this particular case, there is parking in the front yard, but there's always been parking in the front yard in this particular residence. Twelve, any apartment within a one-family dwelling that is in existence at the time of the adoption that -- okay, well, this is a grandfathering, that doesn't apply. Thirteen, the zoning board of appeals should provide copies of the application to and consider amendments which may be submitted within 30 days by the building inspector, fire inspector, town assessor in the health department. Okay. To my knowledge, there have been no issues raised. Fourteen, the provisions of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code shall apply. That will occur just as part of the building permit process. Fifteen, any exterior changes in the single-family dwelling caused by the creation of an accessory apartment shall conform to the single-family character of the neighborhood. And I don't believe there are any external changes being made. Sixteen, continued compliance with all these regulations is required. Failure to do so will result in the revocation of the special use permit. That is simply in effect. And seventeen, the apartment shall be inspected by the building and fire inspectors and the zoning administrator every two years after issuance of the special use permit to ensure compliance with the town building, zoning, and fire codes, and that's simply an ongoing requirement. So does anybody have any questions about this? In my reading, I believe all of the provisions have been satisfied. I mean, is there?
I think that's correct.
Okay, okay. All right, if there are any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could make a suggestion.
Yeah.
Because one of the conditions of this application is that it not be a two-bedroom apartment, I would have the board put as a condition, I'd like to specify the dimensions of the shelving that's going to be in, what type it is, and have as a condition of the special use permit that, once installed, it's permanently installed, and that pictures be provided to the board so that, I mean, to the town, so that when they do their annual two-year inspections, they'll have something to look at, and it be a condition noted on the plan that any change to that shelving would require approval.
Okay. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. And so just now, for the record and for the board's information, what, could you describe kind of how the room is being changed and how the shelving is?
Well, it's shown on our plan that we submitted. I mean, what we could do is we could specify shelf whiffs, shelf whiffs and things of that nature, and then document it, you know. There's going to be a final inspection, I believe, as I understand it, with the building department anyway.
Okay.
So I think that that all could be noted for the record, and then if they do their inspection every two years, you know, they'll have a paper trail to follow.
Okay. Is it that?
Sure. I'd like the actual plans when we find, when you do determine the specifications, to have the material and width of the shelving.
Okay.
And noted on there that they're to be permanently installed. And that way, there'll be a.
Did you want photos?
Well, the town can take the photos, or the applicant can supply the photos, but I think that's always helpful.
The building, you need a building permit to do the changes inside the apartment, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
That was the trigger.
Yeah, yeah.
So he'll have to submit some plans to the building department for them to approve for you to start the work.
Yeah, I think, as I understand, I think the building permit would be required for anything to do with the kitchen or structural or anything else. I don't know whether the town would require a building permit to put up shelves. I mean, but.
Okay, yeah, well.
Right, and that's why I would like it to be part, an actual condition of the special use permit, so that if that were altered, it would be grounds for revocation of the special use permit. So that way, we have, there's no issue as to that argument can't be made in the future.
Okay. So then, we would make it a condition that you submit a description of the shelving and a drawing or a photograph independently of the building permit.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 111 Spackenkill Road? Okay. If not, I think we're at the point where we can close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recused? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Vote on this during the deliberation phase.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, SBRJ2 Stephen Kumar, 22 De La Val Place.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Leibert with KARC.
Ms. Leibert, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, just go ahead.
I think everyone knows this project location because we've been before you prior to this meeting for some other unrelated issues. So tonight, we're here just to address, hopefully, the last remaining issue relative to this project. Just as a reminder, it's located on De La Val. This project has been under an incredible amount of review and scrutiny before the project even became in front of your board. If you recall, the project was rezoned by the town board. So this building existed as a multifamily, you know, residential apartment on the top and a deli on the bottom for years. The town board rezoned it recently, and as part of that rezoning application, they went through a significant review of the impacts related to those uses in the project. After that, the applicant came to the planning board and received site plan approval for the modifications to the deli and for the apartment on the second floor. They received site plan approval, and they received architectural approval for all of the building improvements that you see today at the site. Unfortunately, there was some miscommunication with respect to the paperwork, so we're back before you to seek what I would call a ministerial variance for the roof that was put on top of the porch on the structure. So that's the purpose of the meeting tonight. I brought this elevation, it's also included in your package, so that you can see it. And these were the renderings that were reviewed and approved by the planning board. And what we're talking about is the back of the building. Prior to the applicant purchasing this building, there was a second-story porch that was accessed by a second-story door by the apartment on the second floor, and it was a pretty rudimentary porch. It had stockade fence around it, and that acted as the barrier, you know, the railing, if you want to call it, for the structure. The applicant wanted to, you know, properly enclose this so they could continue to use it and put a roof over top of it. So this is really a reflection of what you'll see today. There's a roof over top of the porch. Your code, unfortunately, even though there was no additional protrusion into the rear yard, the code requires that we seek and obtain a variance for that structure because you're adding it to a second floor. So the roof, again, doesn't protrude any further into the backyard than the existing building. This building, as you know, has been here for years. The porch has been there for years, and we're simply seeking the variance now for this roof structure that's over the second-story porch. So that's the sum of it.
Okay, thank you. Christine, any questions?
No, no questions.
Betty?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any. Paul?
No.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 22 De La Val Place?
Robert Hines, 95 North Grand Avenue.
Mr. Hines, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
The building as it existed before this applicant purchased it, that single-floor addition to the back of the building was a garage. Originally, it was a garage. It was turned into a part of the business in the '60s, but it was always a flat roof. My house and property is directly behind that building. What this young lady just stated isn't entirely true. When the applicant added both gutters and leaders to the back of this building, he's now, those are on my property. This building footprint is on its boundary line. There is no then-further backyard. There is no land past the footing of this building. The applicant added to the base of my fence on my property, earth and some rosebushes. His air conditioner sits on a wall that is a foot and a half onto my property. This is not garden apartment living where I live. Again, that roof structure now over top of the building, which would allow three-season use, four-season use of that air, that space, which is a garage roof, completely takes away the privacy that I have from that building. Totally takes away the privacy. It's a huge invasion to my privacy. I don't need, if somebody on that roof says, "Get me a beer," I don't need my wife getting up, is what I'm talking about. It is that close that it's. I started inquiring about this roof structure in September, when I heard from one of the contractors that they were going to extend what they were putting a pitched roof on the entire building. In September, I went to zoning. They told me to go to planning, or they told me to go to building. Went to building department, filed the FOIL, got the existing building permit applications, talked to Tim Stickles, and everybody assured me all of those permits at that time, on September 16th, were for internal reconstruction of the building only. October 2nd, the roof started. End of October, the roof was finished. And then railing started to go up and everything else, as it is completed today. This building, as far as I know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is non-conforming use in that neighborhood. It's a special use permit. Am I correct?
It's been rezoned, I believe, so that it is now actually conforming to the new zoning designation. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
I believe so. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Is that true?
Yes.
Yeah, the town's board rezoned.
I believe the town's board rezoned this property, so that it's now a, the deli is now the conforming use.
Really don't want to get into the tax base that I pay for my house there, but it's in excess of $13,000 a year. And again, that's not garden apartment type taxes. I pay for privacy, part of my taxes with this piece of property, size of piece of property that I own, distance from my neighbors. It's a 35-foot setback, and it is over his property line. He's past his property line. I don't know how many times I have to say the same thing. An enclosed structure like that on that roof is going to be used for a barbecue, for a picnic table, for outside entertainment of any nature, all of which, again, is going to be in my family room. And to me, that's not fair.
I have a question. Is your family room on the first floor or the second floor?
My house is a one-floor house.
It's a one-floor, okay. All right, so that height, that second, the top of that roof, where you're. The top of that roof, where you're saying there would be a barbecue or picnic table, that is actually above your house?
Above and 12 feet away.
Okay.
12 feet off the corner of my... The corner of my house.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Unless you whisper, I'm going to hear you.
Ms. Leibert, how far does the roof extend past the rest of the building?
It's on the property line. That's where the roof structure, and it's in line with the foundation of the balance of the building. And I just want to comment in response to some of the statements that were made. The applicant did receive all of the building permits that were required for all of the work that was completed and has the COs for the property. And in accordance with the town's requirements, in order to get a CO, you provide as-built of the property. So all of the necessary work was completed to get the CO back from the town of Kipsey.
But without a variance. The work was completed. My understanding, it was originally left off the site plan, meaning the roof. It was then added to the site plan. The site plan had been approved. Then the roof was added to the site plan?
That's absolutely not correct, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's what I was told by Tim Stickles.
Yeah, provided you with the plans.
And Neil Wilson?
Yeah. It's not our issue to trace the administrative history of the application. I mean, what we have in front of us is the fact that the site plan has, in fact, been approved by the planning board. And of course, they're an entirely independent body. And, you know, that's what they've put in front of us. So, you know, the order in which things were done or whatever really is not relevant to us. The issue is there's a request for a variance to allow the one-foot... Less than one-foot setback where 35 feet is required in a BN zone. I mean, that is the issue. And you've raised some, you know, I think, important issues that we'll have to consider. I guess one of the questions that I would have is that up until this point, have you been... Had problems with the existing, when it was an open roof and there were, you know, chairs and people were using it and whatever?
It was never... It was never an open roof. For probably... This is the total guess, 25 years ago. The current owner put six-foot stockade on top of the single-floor garage roof, which then naturally blocks noise, blocks sight. Didn't make it a desirable situation to go out there because the only thing that you could look at was up. You're looking... You're surrounded by fence, right? Now with it open and a railing, again, it's human nature. It's a place to barbecue. It's a place to sunbathe. It's a place to watch TV. It's a place maybe to dance. Who knows? But it's not private any longer.
And that never... All those things never occurred in the past?
That's correct. Never occurred in the past. Not in the 36 years that I've lived there.
Okay, and is that because of the way it was built or because of the people that were living there?
The way it was built, that was an asphalt roof. If you step on an aged asphalt roof, it no longer prevents water from coming in the structure. So somebody's brain would tell you, "Don't walk on an asphalt roof or dance or barbecue or whatever on it because you're going to do damage to an asphalt roof." I have no clue what kind of a roof is up there now. I believe it looks like a burned-down dividend roof, but which may tolerate people being on it. I have no idea. But there is a railing. Actually, it's totally closed in. Lights up there. It's, you know, it's... It's an extension of that building into my yard.
Okay.
And this young lady again said that the building is built on the property line? I'd like to know whether you have to include in your building permit, as an example, the distance gutters and leaders and then drainage line takes? Because that physically is on my property. It's on my property.
Well, it overhangs your property.
Correct.
Okay.
Which means it's not on his property.
Okay.
Attached to his property.
Okay, any question for Mr. Hines? Any other board members? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I am Heinz Finkel. I live at De LaVal across the street from 22 De LaVal.
Mr. Finkel, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. So I'd like to present some other objections and reiterate some of the things Mr. Hines pointed out. I've lived in that neighborhood for 16 years, and during the time we've been there, that roof has never been used for anything. The residents who lived in that apartment did not go out there. The roof extension is extremely out of proportion to the existing residences. And if you look not just at the site plan, but if you look at a Google Street View of the neighborhood, you'll see there's nothing else like it in the neighborhood. It's the only structure in which somebody is almost literally on top of somebody else. It's a 35-foot gap is required, so this is a very extreme accommodation. The roof reflects sound directly down onto Mr. Hines's family room. We live in a house that's about 75 feet from a similar structure that's on North Grand, and we're 75 feet away. We can hear every conversation happening there. And when that house plays music or when there are arguments, when obscenities are shouted, we hear them. We're 75 feet away. So Mr. Hines's situation is going to be far worse than that. Even with good tenants, the sound is an annoyance. If the tenants would happen to be bad, that would be pretty horrible for him. The houses next to the store are good properties. The neighborhood is stable, although it was hit hard by the recession. One of the adjoining neighbors is in her 90s, and we would like to maintain the stability of the neighborhood and sustain the quality of life there. There were foreclosures in the neighborhood, as I mentioned. These houses will have to be sold in the future, and who would want to live next to that structure? The noise burden is pretty considerable. No one should have to endure that in the neighborhood. And I'd like to reiterate that this would be of benefit only to the owner of 22 De LaVal. It's out of character to the rest of the neighborhood. The rezoning, by the way, was done without anyone in the neighborhood being notified. And in fact, you have a petition requesting that in the future, the neighbors be notified for things like this. So those are what I'd like to present.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, if not, anyone else wish to address the application at 22 De LaVal? Okay. I guess, Ms. Leibert, you have any?
Yeah, I just want to just clarify a couple of items. There is a door opening that has been on that second-floor apartment out to this porch since the inception of the building. So there is a door that has been there to allow people to go in and out of that second-floor porch. So it wasn't something that was just recently added. And someone had mentioned that you can hear noise or arguments from the space. The space, just so everyone understands, is unoccupied on the second floor. The applicant has not proceeded with the building permit to do any of the fit-up for the work on the second-floor apartment. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands. It's not occupied at the moment, so I'm not sure what noise they're hearing. That's it.
Okay.
Can I clarify something? The noise I was talking about is from a different building that's within 75 foot of our house. I was not referring to that building.
That was clear, but you were obviously making an analogy.
I was making an analogy, right?
Yes. I would... Let me ask what might be a hypothetical question, and that's, you know, in the event that that second floor is fitted out to be an apartment, wouldn't it be reasonable to add as a condition that some kind of screening be erected on the second floor? Some... Maybe a smaller fence or some kind of fabric or something that would keep the noise from going right straight down to Mr. Hines's house?
Yes, I think that the applicant would be willing to put up... There's, you know, some heavy-duty and interior/exterior screening and fabric that could be installed. That would be a reasonable request to put and would potentially serve that intent.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? We have heard from the audience. If there's nothing further, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousleds? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three. Conrad Gessner Jr., Sherman Williams... Sherwin Williams Paint Store at 684 Duchess Turnpike. So if each of you gentlemen would state your names for the record and be sworn in, please.
Tom Godfrey, Nauset Investment Partners.
Christopher Lepine, The Chasing Companies.
Mr. Lepine and Mr. Godfrey, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So help you, God. Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so if you just give us... We have a lot of materials, but give us the kind of overview here.
Tom Godfrey with Nauset Investment Partners. Since we were here last, in front of this board, we have obtained approval... Site plan approval from the planning board as well as architectural review. There were some minor changes
Correct.
in response to staff and board comments with the planning board. So we've resolved our permit and approval process there. There were no specific comments at our last hearing here that we had to address. So in terms of technical changes, I'll defer to Chris on those. But we're here to answer any additional questions from the board.
One of the items we were outstanding with when we were back here in June was the negative declaration from the town of Kipsey Planning Board, which we also obtained during the July meeting, just to refresh your memory here. The existing parcel is nonconforming in the sense that its existing front yard setbacks, its rear yard setback, and its impervious coverage does not meet the bulk requirements of the BN zone. We are looking to build the building in the same footprint as the existing front setbacks are along Peckham Road and Duchess Turnpike. The existing nonconformity as it relates to the rear yard setback has a 20-foot setback. We intend to move that into 25.8 feet, thus reducing it another almost six feet. We've eliminated the need for impervious coverage on the site. We are fall below the 75%. We don't believe what we're asking for is substantial and will produce an undesirable effect in a neighborhood. We've included in our application six under parcels within a quarter-mile that have similar nonconformities. We believe overall the project will be an improvement in the area. In addition to the nonconformities, we'll be eliminating all the impervious area in the front of the site that exists today, the asphalt area. We'll be replacing that with landscaping as well. The... Part of the reason with the nonconformity in the rear is the planning board's desire that we locate the loading area in the rear of the building. In the past, portions of the front was used for loading. We've also been asked to provide screening for the residential nonconforming property to the south of us. We've provided both landscaping and fencing in that area.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
Excuse me, did you say you're going to tear the president building down?
Correct.
I missed that somewhere in the... And you're going to look similar? Do you have it? I can't find it.
I have an elevation with me.
You might have something here.
Forgot this one.
We can move on, which is what you want.
Yeah, I...
I can... I've got an extra copy of what I had submitted back in June.
I think we can find it here.
Yeah, I don't know if there's elevation...
Not a picture of the actual...
Yeah, of the building, although...
Building itself.
Though the issue actually before us has to do with, you know...
Setbacks.
Yeah, setbacks where it's located. But...
If I may, I can provide you some copies.
Sure, just hand it, and we'll just pass it along. I think... I think we've all been out there, and we agree that the existing building is...
It's been a long time. It's kind of rough.
Yeah, it's a little scruffy, and I'm sure this would be an improvement.
You can pass them along, or three copies of the same, once everybody can get one and take a look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
And you're going to put the house behind this property, directly behind it?
Yes.
That's not part of the property?
Not part of the property.
And you're going to screen that, you said, with a fencing and/or...
With a new fence. The board asked for a cedar fence at the last public meeting with the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Nice. My only question is not for you, but for Sandy. Did the county comment on this at all?
Yeah, it was local concern.
Local concern, okay. Paul, any questions?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application for 684 Duchess Turnpike? Okay, hearing none. If there are no further questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousleds? Okay, closed. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four. Paula Young Bora, 2186 New Hackensack Road. Okay, good evening, folks. If you'd both just state your names.
Paula Ava Young Bora. If I marry anybody else, it won't fit on a piece of paper.
Tom Walsh. Okay. Tom Walsh, okay.
Mr. Walsh and Ms. Young Bora, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. One of the reasons for adjourning it was to allow the board members on their field trip to see a kind of a mock-up. And unfortunately, I was out of town, so I didn't have a chance to see it. So I'm actually going to... Somebody take a picture of it?
Yes, slide it both ways. There's pictures both ways. Yes, slide it both ways, there's pictures both ways.
Okay. All right, okay. Okay, all right, got it, okay. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. And just to remind everybody, the, in the, in the county review of this, they recommended that this be denied, and of course, as you know, that means that if we approve it, it must be with a supermajority, a majority plus one, so that would be five votes. And there is also a staff report that also recommends that this be denied, so I guess we will go over to you, and why is essentially putting the sign in its previous location the best place?
May I ask why it was denied by the staff?
In, the short version is that, that a, a smaller monument sign would be less intrusive.
What about, is it a concern about the setback?
Um, well-
I should've brought donuts, right? That's why I screwed up.
No, no.
Okay. Let us see here, okay. The sign that is proposed would far exceed the allowable size for the district and would be of a design, i.e. a non-monument, freestanding, exposed steel post sign, out of keeping with the maximum allowed in the residential district. Additionally, the sign application does not identify the location of the freestanding sign, which you've obviously supplied, okay. Staff does not believe that the applicant has provided sufficient justification for a sign that is not only six times larger and a hundred and fifty percent taller than allowed in the district in terms of the business need for visibility, particularly since the business is highly visible as the only restaurant located on this stretch of New Hackensack Road. Additionally, by providing only an exposed steel post with some minimal seasonal plantings at the base, the application makes no attempt to mitigate the overly large sign. Staff believes that the proposed signage is out of character with the R-20 district, okay. And then, there are some other comments, but that, but that is, that is the key.
Okay, we tried to keep within the square footage of the previous business, as you know, we actually reduced the height of the sign probably by two feet, I believe, from the previous sign as well, so I'm making an assumption that it wasn't a detriment to the environment or the area because nobody's complained about the previous sign, I don't know if there's anything on record about that, any complaints about the previous exposed neon sign. This has a subdued background where it's a black opaque background and only the letters will light up, so it's not, you know, overly overpowering. For the viewing, it's very easy to pass by the, the business, assuming that it's a house, if there's not a substantial, well, not even, I wouldn't say it's substantial, because it's a small sign. Having a sign there is definitely needed for the business to, you know, be recognized by anybody driving by.
Okay.
Otherwise, it'll be passed by thinking that it's a residence, because Paul is actually doing a nice job with fencing and the landscaping in the front, and it kind of appears like a residence in a way.
Okay. What's the speed limit on 376 out in front of 40?
Fast. What cars do is like fifty-five miles per hour, I believe it's forty-five.
They fly, I mean, scares me, they just killed a mother deer.
I understand that there's a difference between what's posted and what people drive, okay, but nominally, it's a forty-five mile-
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No, no questions right now.
Betty?
Well, up until we went for the mock-up, I was right behind the county with the monument sign, because I really like monument signs. But when we got out there and he did the mock-up for us, I realized that a monument sign would be exactly in the distance of cars coming-
Line of sight.
-north, right in the line of sight. If you were leaving her facility, I mean, you, it's okay if you're going east and, goes, no, it goes north and south, right? It's okay going that way, but when you try to leave her facility, it's right in the line of view, so the, I don't think a monument sign will work there. I don't think it needs to be as high as the previous one, but you need to be able to see traffic coming underneath the sign.
I'm ignorant, what is a monument sign? I don't know what that is.
It's essentially a sign that's mounted on the ground and then rises up, perhaps four feet or so, I don't know the exact specification, but-
The tombstone.
Yeah.
That's small, and my big concern is people kicking it, hitting it accidentally, running into it, people who I hope will never happen, but young people perhaps deciding they want to, my $4,000 sign, throw a rock at it if it's too touchable, close to the ground.
My other comment, since I'm on a roll here, is I'm okay with the sign being on the, on the post, and not as high as previously before, but high enough so that you can see the line of traffic. So then my question becomes, what are you gonna do aesthetically with that post beam, that steel beam?
My plan was to either wrap it or to plant vine or to do a fence underneath it, which you, when you came, I'm still, I haven't really finished the outdoors. We were gonna put cobblestones down that path to the post box, which is right past the sign, and, you know, do it decoratively, is going to, I'm gonna try to make it as pretty as I can. Unfortunately, they put a big blob of cement at the bottom of the post, and I can't dig that up, so I was gonna try to do something pretty to somehow soften it.
Yeah, definitely needs to be softened.
It needs either, but that's annual, you're absolutely right, I was gonna also do like a climatus, but that is solely spring through fall.
Right, that would, that's not year-round, okay.
Okay. Art?
Is a sign off the front of the building feasible? A hanging sign that would stick out?
I wanted to do that, but-
Is that not feasible?
But unfortunately, unless you're standing in front of the building from across the street, you won't see it.
No, no, I mean, one that sticks out toward New Hackensack Road, not one that's flush.
The house is too set back.
Perpendicular sign you're talking about?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it is not, I mean, there's a roof line there that you're not allowed to attach to a roof line structure, and it's not high enough for a perpendicular sign.
And it's a ways back.
It, in the end, it's pretty far back.
Okay.
Okay, no, just a thought.
Paul, any questions?
No, no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
Yes, one of the comments from the county was they wanted something less intrusive. I assume they mean less intrusive to the neighbors across the way.
I am not, I assume it's something-
That was their objection.
Right, right. Yeah.
The neighbors hated the old time, they've come over and told me it was a neon sign, exposed neon, and it flickered, and it was bright and orange and green. This is gonna be probably subtle black and light comes through the letters white.
Yeah, I mean, the, the design that you propose is, I think, a much, much improvement over, over the old one. The, the other thing that I would raise, and actually, we could talk more about this when we do our deliberations, but I was almost surprised to see that this is zoned R-20, you know, residential, in, in a place that had a bar there forever, has a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And most of the signs that you would see in a residential area are essentially home occupations, you know, and so the restrictions are to make those as inobtrusive as possible. And to me, that stretch of 376 just doesn't feel like a residential area, I mean, this is, this is way different than, you know, Round Hill Road.
How long has that been zoned R-20?
I suppose since the last rezoning, what, 2007?
Before that, it was probably R-10.
Yeah.
Most of them were R-10, and then, right?
If you pass my bar heading towards Vassar College, the next sign, the only other sign is the one for St. Martin de Porres, the top of that block on Cedar Valley, and then the church. Those are the only other two signs, but they're quite large.
And the town has one for the park, isn't it?
Right, correct.
Yeah, yeah, Greenville, yeah.
True. Another question, if I may. Don't they make a slip-over box for poles? Don't they make, like, it's, I've seen them for sign poles where you have the pole, and it's a PVC or something that slips over these poles?
My carpenter was gonna make a box for me.
So instead of a round pole, we'd have a, what looks like a wooden structure, I guess you're, it's, you're hiding a pole.
Cladding, you're talking about cladding for the, to hide the round pole?
Yes.
Yeah, that can be done.
My carpenter was, I should, we were talking about-
So now we no longer have a round steel pole to worry about, even though it's inside the box.
Okay.
Kills one problem, right?
Yeah.
Is that something that's easily done?
You're talking about a skirting kind of thing.
Yes, so you're not taking the pole down, you're hiding the pole, essentially.
I do that often.
And it's very pretty when you do that.
And you can still see around it.
Right, yeah, because you're only talking just past, I don't know, you know better than I do.
So, so you would be agreeable to some conditions that would talk about-
You're hiding the pole.
-hiding the pole and of some, some kind of real landscaping around the base of the sign and-
Well, again, the landscaping will be there, I'm gonna be ripping out that hideous asphalt thing that they put down and putting proper, non-trip hazard, nice, pretty, as you can see, I'm doing everything I can to make it aesthetically pleasing, because I have to live there most of the time, so I want it to be pretty, you know, but no, I have no problem, that's, that's what I wanted to do originally.
And you would top that pole at the top of the sign? So you wouldn't, there'd be nothing above the top of the sign?
Actually, if you saw the photograph, I believe the top of the cardboard was right at the, there's a plate, and then there was an extension of about eighteen inches of pole there, so that plate would be chopped off. My sign would slip over that going four feet down.
So you'd see nothing above your sign?
There's nothing above the sign, no.
And, and what's the distance below?
Below, well, we were looking at eleven and a half feet to the top.
Below, it was seven inches.
And then, so you have four feet from there.
I think it was seventy-one inches, a six-foot person could stand under it easily.
Okay, oh, so, so there would, so there would be no problem with a car driving up and being able to see-
No, absolutely.
Get up and down for us.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful, okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 21886? Yes. Okay, if you'd just state your name, please.
I'm Kirk Sheridan, I reside at 2189 New Hackensack Road.
Mr. Sheridan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
I just wanted to express my support for her application. I live across the road, and I won't be affected by the sign, and I had looked at the meeting from last month and was concerned about some of the suggestions that were made to try and be compliant, and you've already addressed some of those with your own comments, but I don't see it being detrimental to the neighborhood, and actually, to make it lower would be creating a hazard where historically there hasn't been one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and no further comments from the public, and no further questions from the board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Coozles? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, Mohinder Mangat, 47 Terrace. Good evening, so just state your name for the record.
Mohinder Mangat.
Mr. Mangat, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, when you were here last, we had a discussion about-
Right.
-how large a variance you needed, and originally, it was thought that it was gonna be fourteen point five feet, and as we discussed it, what you would like to do would require a variance to allow you to be within nine feet of the boundary.
Right, should be nine, I don't think it should be fourteen point five.
Okay, so, except for that, changing, and now asking for a deck to be located nine feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required, have there been any other changes?
No.
No, okay, so we don't-
Brian actually went to the house, and he sees no problem, so.
You went, you, okay, okay, great. All right, Christine, any questions?
Okay, so I wasn't here last month, so the deck is three feet off of the existing house.
Deck is right behind the house, but that three feet will be like access to the deck, right from the house.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, the only question I have is in the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it should be nine feet from- Yeah, so just make, make that change.
Yeah, just so we're clear, the public, the notice that was published in the paper was correct, but what was the number that's in the agenda is incorrect, so legally, we're okay.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address 47 Site's Terrace? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Brian, for helping get that straightened out.
Yeah.
Item number six, Hudson Valley Building Technology, 18 Longview Road. Let's see, I guess he is, I don't see him. Okay.
Want to hold it till last?
Yeah, let me just note here that there's, there's a, there's a similar change that you need to make, actually, it's correct on the agenda, this was also a case where as we looked at the survey, it became clear that the original request for a ten-foot variance was, was incorrect, that-
It was a less of a variant.
Yeah, that the house was actually closer to the property line, so what, yeah, so it was re-advertised to allow a home addition to be located eight point seven feet from the side lot line where twenty is required, so that was the only reason that we adjourned it, and since that has been corrected and there's been no other change, I don't see why we can't go ahead and act on this tonight.
I would run through the rest of the public hearings, if there's nothing, then we can close the public hearing at the end of that in case the applicant shows-
Okay.
And then go from there.
Nope, that's just fine. Okay.
Someone just came in.
No, it's not him.
No, no, not-
Is that Longview?
No.
Betty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, Jim, the gentleman with his hand up in the flat chair.
It, for the, um, Longview Road?
He's a neighbor, right? He wished to comment on it.
Okay, oh, yeah, well, come, come on up. Okay, if you'd just state your names for the record?
Yeah, it's Carl Vusage.
Marjorie Vusage.
Mr. and Mrs.?
Vusage.
Vusage, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? you got?
Yes.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
And you said you-
We own a vacant lot.
Okay, at 16?
At 16.
Okay.
And that has been in the family for 40, 50 years, whatever it's been.
Okay.
And the lot is 60 feet wide. And this house, I believe, next door is in shambles, and it looks like they just had it surveyed, and I went and I measured from the survey point, the lot is 60 feet wide, our lot. And this looks like there's a porch there already that's right up against the line, so I don't know where they're gonna get this extra room from, unless they're gonna put the porch on the other side of the building. It doesn't say which side it's gonna be on. But they are using our land now for driveway. Now, the house is under construction, it's been like that for three or four years, so I don't know who this party is that's, is representing this, but we had met the owner a few years back, and the house, the lot is for sale, and to be very honest, we're having trouble giving it away. So it would behoove this person at 18 to look at buying our property, and then he wouldn't have any problem at all. So our property is a residential lot, it has water and sewer, and it's 60 feet wide. Now, the setbacks are 20 feet on each side. That's kind of ridiculous, because you can put a 20-foot house on it. So we're opposed to him doing this, just because it's gonna be right on our land.
Okay, okay.
If that means anything.
Right. Any board members have any questions of this couple?
Has there been a survey? Do you have a survey?
Well, we were just there, and the property looks like it has been surveyed, and the stake, from the stake, I measured 60 feet to 12 Longview Road, which we used to own, and that's, the stake is in the right spot, and it's right up, it goes right back, it's right up against their property where there's a little bit of a porch there now. So I don't know where they're gonna get this extra room from.
You're saying the driveway is on your property? Looking at the house, the driveway on the right of the house?
No.
No.
Yeah, the driveway's to the right of this, of this house.
If you're looking at the front door.
Yeah, now, I had talked to the man when they were working on it, and I told him, I said, "If you want to use this spot for a while, you know, you can get in and out easy", and, you know, then the guy stopped working on it, so it's been vacant for two, three years. So I don't know who this, who this party is here that's representing it now.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, is it a contractor or what, I don't even know who it is.
Don't know.
Now, we came, particularly, we're from Mystic, Connecticut, so we came here for this meeting, and we've got a long drive back, so.
Okay. All right. Okay, it appears that, well, the application calls for whatever, and he describes it as a home addition on that side. I guess there was a porch there.
There still is a porch there, he's just gonna use that porch.
But apparently to enlarge it a little bit.
But not encroaching on the lot line?
No, no, the, it's, now he, he's planning to have it 8.7 feet from the lot line.
But he's saying it's right on the lot line.
I, if you sight it now, there's no eight feet between the edge of that little porch to the, to this, to our line, there's no eight feet there. This thing is non-conforming already, and it's probably been like great for 50 years, who knows?
Okay, well, you know, if, if we granted this variance, they would have to establish where the lot line is, and they could be no closer than 8.7 feet, I mean, that's-
But somebody just surveyed it, so I don't know who did it, and-
Okay, well, I mean, you-
I mean, I'd like to know who owns the place, I don't know, you can talk to them, basically, that's what I'm trying to find out.
It should be public records, isn't it?
Well-
You know, I mean, there's, you know, this Hudson Valley Building Pick, I don't know who that is.
Well, I-
It's the property, according to the survey document, which was done July 8th, 2016, is Richard Vinatose. Right. So it was surveyed, and the surveyor puts the edge of the porch at 8.7 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Was one of you gentlemen out there looking at it?
Since it's been surveyed.
Not since it's been surveyed.
Just looking at, you didn't go look at the building?
What's your last name?
Vusage, V-A-S-N-V-I-C-H.
Well, actually, we were there, we were there just after it was surveyed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if you look at the survey lines, the site, there's no eight feet from the existing edge of that porch to my line, it's much less, in fact, it's, I don't know what it is, but it's much less than eight feet.
Okay, all right, well, you, I mean, you raise an important question, and unfortunately, the gentleman that put in the application is not here, and I guess until we can resolve that, we'll probably have to simply adjourn this.
I would like to go back out and look at it, if that's the case.
Yeah, so- Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean-
I believe the property was purchased on a auction originally, this-
I have no idea.
He might not know what he was buying.
Yeah, I'm sure of it, because when I went out there, it was pretty, the building's pretty dilapidated.
It should be knocked down.
Yeah, I mean, this is a stamped survey dated July 8th, 2016.
And who did the survey, please?
Oswald.
Uh, yeah.
Local surveyor.
Yeah.
Local surveyor.
Yeah, Oswald.
Excuse me, what was the name?
Oswald.
Oswald.
Yeah, O-S-W-A-L-D, and, I mean, it looks pretty clear. The, they've drawn in the proposed addition, and it's 8.7 feet from the, from the property line. So, I mean, this becomes the legal, this is the legal document on-
Can I have a copy of that, something?
Not this one, this is a signed one, we have to, we have to keep it.
You have to come in for, you have to come in for a foil, unfortunately, because you live in Connecticut.
But, well, I mean, could I not, I could talk to Mr. Oswald here, whatever it is.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's in Poughkeepsie.
We can take the phone, we can do the phone number.
I mean?
I'll give you the phone number, and you can call him.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wouldn't like anything done on this until it's resolved, because we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna be against it, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if this, if there's some confusion about where the property line is, and if this is encroaching on, on somebody else's property, then obviously, that's, that's-
Yeah, I mean, when you look at it now, the driveway that he's been using is on our property, I mean, and you look at it, you say-
Okay, though, let's be clear, you had a conversation, and you said that that was okay for construction purposes.
For construction purposes, right.
Fine, yeah, okay, okay.
Jim, do we have to look at this again?
Well, we may have to. I, you know, the applicant's not here, so let's, let's just put this to one side and go on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
If the applicant doesn't appear, I think we're gonna have to adjourn this, go back out there, have a look. Now, do you have a current survey of your property?
No.
No, okay.
We thought we did, we couldn't find one.
Okay.
But, I mean, we're not, the other side facing our property to the right-hand side was a house that we owned at one time, so we know where that line is, and then, and we took a measuring tape from the stake that the surveyor put in at 60 feet, so we've got 60 feet, which was way over compared to looking at the driveway that they've been using.
Okay.
You know, that was nice.
But you don't have a survey from a licensed surveyor?
For our property?
Of your property.
Not in my possession.
Okay.
I mean, that's the question that the Realtors keep asking me.
Probably do on, in the county office of the property, but you don't, you're not in possession of one.
Not right now, no.
If you're calling Mr. Oswald to find out about this parcel, since he's already, since one of the property lines is common with your property, you may want to ask him to prepare a survey for your property as well, if that could show.
I appreciate that, in fact, I thought that, but I'm saying, I felt very comfortable that we had a survey of the property, and we've been looking, we called around a few people, and we can't find it, because, I mean, again, this property has been in the same hands of my wife's mother for 60 years.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I think, thank you very much for your, for your comments, like I said, I think it's important, and let's, we'll put this aside until we can, we can get clarification from the, from the applicant.
We did receive your letter, so you have our correct address.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a safe trip, home.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's put item six to the end of the agenda, and that brings us to item number seven, Arnco Sign Company on behalf of Capstone Plaza, 50 and Burnett Boulevard, otherwise known as the Big Lots. Okay, so if you just state your name?
Yes, Eric Merlis from Arnco Sign Company.
Mr. Merlis, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I hope you got? Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. I believe we adjourned this the last time for a couple of reasons. One is that we've been advised by the county that in their review, they recommend that it be denied, principally because it was, it was too large, and we asked you to prepare some drawings and pictures that would show what the sign that you're proposing would look like, but also a sign that would conform to the code.
Right, we did submit the, you know, originally, I believe it was last month I was here, with the 145 square foot, which we went into depth about why it was too large, and we left it off at what 120 square foot would look like on the facade, as well as the 100 foot, which wouldn't require the variance, but would be the max, and we submitted both for you to have a look at, and let me know, preferably, the 120, which is, you know, 25 square foot smaller than what we proposed last month, and hopefully, we can get that approved, if not, then we'll have to go with the 100 foot, which we showed it on the wall as well, showing it, you know, much smaller.
Yeah, okay, so, all right, so let's see, there's, there's one that's 99.6 square feet.
Right, that would be the one-
That would conform.
Showing, exactly, and then there's one that says 119.79 square foot.
And then the other one is just, just short of 120 square feet. Okay. All right, let me, let me just be perfectly frank with you.
There's so much difference.
I'm not sure that there's much difference.
I can't see any difference.
The, seems to me, the one that conforms to the code is very visible.
You sure they're different?
Sure they're different.
And I don't, can you, can you make a compelling case for why?
My customer wants the largest they could go with, with it being such a large store, you know, and originally being 145 square foot, you know, it's a four-foot-six height letter as opposed to a four-foot-one letter B for Big Lots, so, you know.
They always want to go as big as they possibly can, but-
They want to have a reason why they're sending me here, not just to come back and say it's allowed without the variance.
You know, the new sign, the new book has so much more contrast than the previous one, I don't, I don't see where you're losing, I think just the nature of the brand change is increasing their visibility dramatically, and if you look at the 99-square-foot one, it's much more visible than your existing sign.
I think one of the issues-
And considerably smaller.
Yeah, one of the issues was the, there's that light pole right in front as well, that-
It's only, it's only there for a second, and then-
Right.
And I don't think many people are standing there looking at it from, from that one spot, they're traveling, they're in vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just not convinced that, that anything over that 99 square feet does anything. And I was driving past there today, and along Burnett Boulevard, and I looked over specifically, and, and noticed that one of the issues there, and it's got nothing to do with your, with the Big Lot store, but it's just the way the whole shopping center is laid out, is that along Burnett Boulevard, there's a row of fairly mature trees, so that no matter how big you put a sign on the wall, you wouldn't, you can't see it most of the time as you're driving along Burnett Boulevard. So it's, it's not like it has to be big enough so that, you know, and cars on, you know, some highway can see it. Essentially, what that sign does is alerts people that are already in the shopping center to exactly where to find the door to go into the, into the Big Lots. So I, you know, like I said, I, I don't get it, and plus, I would just remind you that because the county has recommended it be denied, we would, we would have to, we'd have to do two things. One, it'd be, we'd have to have at least five votes to support it, and I'm not sure that those five votes are here. The second thing we would have to do is we have to explain to the county why we're overriding their, their recommendation, and that, and I suppose we could make up some story, no, wait, no, I'm, I don't, I don't want to say that, sorry. Let's, let's just-
We can come up with reasons.
It's jet lag.
That, yeah, that it would require, it would require a certain imagination to, okay. So, any comment?
I just have a, have a question for you. Can you talk to the company, Big Lots, and tell them sometimes less is more? That, you know, it hasn't pointed out that it is more visible, and maybe more effective, and that's what you, what they really want in the long run? So it's maybe a question of you trying to sell them.
Well, I suspect from the kind of conversation that we're, we are gonna vote to deny, that means you're free to put up a sign up to and including 100 square feet, and I, and I think, given the design that you've come up with, it'll be a very attractive and effective sign. I mean, it's so much more readable than what's there now, that at 100 square feet, I think you're gonna be way ahead in-
Less, lot less aggravation.
Yeah, 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 you know, and you're not gonna sit here trying to make water run uphill. Okay, any other questions, comments from the board? Anyone in the audience? 15 Burnett Boulevard, okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recoozles? Okay, right, thank you very much. Item number eight. TLP Associates LLC. The addresses affected are thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four, and forty dash forty-two McKinley Lane.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have to repeat myself on this one?
Okay.
Thank you.
And, um, where did Phyllis go? Oh, there she is. Wait, okay. All right, so she will be a, a voting member on this one? Okay. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name?
My name's Tom Gleason.
Mr. Gleason, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got the information that you submitted, but can you kind of explain to us what this project is about?
Well, the project is, we, we've owned it as a family for, I don't know, sixty, seventy years, pretty much. And we're trying, we relocated a majority of our, our construction company to another area, and we're trying to, to size up the property enough so that on the thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-four and the other properties, so that the, so it can be saleable for people to use it, especially the thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-four. We're trying to get it to the point where we can sell it to people to own the homes where my brother and my, the TLP is myself, my sister, and my brother. And we're getting it to the point where we can make it affordable for people to move in and live. The thirty-two home was my father's who passed away this year. And we're, you know, want to get it to people that can enjoy the home and the houses and use them. And we owned them for many years because he lived in the middle, he lived in the center, and we wanted to, you know, kind of control his, we didn't sell it earlier because of him. And we wanted, people, the people who were there watched out for him, okay? And since we didn't live next to him, and which was better at times, especially for me. But, and we're just trying, and forty, forty-two, we're just trying to, you know, bring the property so it can be more friendly use. I mean, we had it, or we used the entire thing as the Gleason Construction Company. And now that we've moved to a, a larger site, we found in the past, we moved three and a half years ago, we've tried to do different things with it. And we actually rented it for a while and try, and it's just been, the realtors and everybody saying it's just too large. Nobody wants to invest something as large as that in one parcel. So we're trying to make it more friendly use to rent or sell.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
So this is, this is one parcel and, and you're?
Well, it isn't one. The way you would view it at first was one. And we've tried to narrow it down and, and make it the, with the planning board, the thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-four, we used the properties in the rear, we used it as it was originally subdivided nineteen twenty-one or something. And the, and we tried to keep the front as much residential as possible, but in the rear of it was our construction company. So we're just trying to tidy it up and make it look a little more presentable.
Thank you.
Okay.
We haven't, we really haven't changed anything with some, what we're looking for excluding the sizes, but that's basically the sizes of a lot of the homes in that area, as long as I can, born and raised there. The sheds and like that, they, I can't, I remember them my entire childhood. So it isn't something like we just popped up or was added, you know, within the last ten years. It's just been there.
If I, I might be able to help the board. These were originally six parcels, and I believe what the applicant is trying to do is make it into five so that they're slightly larger and more buildable, but not sell it as one unit. So this project is currently before the planning board for other issues, I believe, right? Site plan, Brian? Or, I thought there was some reason that it was before the planning board, whether it was the subdivision or lot line moving?
Yeah, we.
Lot line revisions.
Yeah, we, we revised one, a couple of lines because they were inner. All the property was non-conforming way back when I was a child. And so the lines were very skeptical of where they were. And we just used them all at once. So going to the planning board, we're trying to get definitive, this is where the line is here, or this is where.
The operation that they had on site, it worked. Now, now the Gleasons want to prepare it for sale and.
And is the matter still before the planning board, or has that been concluded?
It's before the planning board because I, I need to go, we need to go to the city as well, because there's a strip about thirty feet long through the back of it. So we need to, we went to the planning board, the planning board said we need to come to the zoning to clean up the issues here. And then from here, we're allowed to go back to the city because we have, the, the town took the lead. So then the city said, once everything is fine with the town, come to us, we'll approve it. And then we go back to the planning board to get the final approval again. We've been almost a year in this process of going back and forth, trying to, you know, get it, make everybody happy. But also, we have a couple of people that are interested by the homes, that we would like to not be landlords and let them be their own people. And they've been very patient, waiting for us to try to make this usable so that they can get a mortgage.
But I, if I understand this, and you correct me, that the only issue for us is the environmental review. And apparently, the, the planning board has completed that.
For, the, the only issue that would prevent this board from acting on the application before it was the neg deck, and that's resolved.
Yeah.
So this board can address the variance issues, but then it will go back to the planning board after that. But we're free to act.
Well, because I'm, I'm sure there are all kinds of drainage issues and, and.
No, all that, all that is fine.
Oh, okay.
Biggest issue is the city Poughkeepsie and the sewer easement. And then they're all tied together. So, I mean.
Yeah.
And, and, and between each other. So we have to satisfy all the different parties
Okay.
And trying to go through it in the correct way.
Okay. Betty, any questions?
I'm just understanding. I can tell already that there have been a lot of improvements on those parcels. I mean, they, they look far better than they used to. I mean, there have been some serious things happening there. My question is, we are not in the habit of, of making parcels that are only half the normal square footage. But how, how long ago were those things built? Because I can remember them being there when, when I was like young.
Yeah. The only one that's the newest one that's there is the thirty-two was my father's. It was a vacant lot. And he, there's a lot of variances, not a lot, but there's variances for him. He constructed. He wanted to, that's where he was born and raised, and that's where he wanted to come back and live. So he, at the time, got his house built. I think it's less than twenty years old, but that's it. The other houses on either side.
They've been there a long time.
They've been, been, oh, I'm sixty, sixty-five, and they've been there, they've been there ever since I can remember.
Okay.
I mean, that was my play yard. My grandparents, my, you know, it goes back for many generations in there. And even my grandparents' home, which was across from forty, forty-two, was thirty-nine, we sold that to the, we were renting it, and we sold it to the tenant that was living there. And that, that's as small as these two. I mean, the original site plans showed for all these houses up the street to have another set of houses behind it with a road, with a road in between it. But that's, you know, that was a paper, what they call paper roads back then, and paper properties and.
Right.
Okay, I have no.
All right, good. One of the new lots, I've forgotten which, which number, doesn't currently have a house on it, one of those that you proposed?
In between. And that one doesn't have any, doesn't have anything with it.
Yeah, it, but it has a long strip running parallel to the, to the Falk Hill.
That has, it has, it's, it runs, it's so, it's access to the rear of the parcel, basically. It's the only access to the rear of the parcel.
Okay, and now there's, I, I noticed there were a, a number of trucks parked, parked back there.
Correct.
Now, is that going to, are you going to continue to use that for truck parking?
We rent it, we rent it. It's, it's, it's all zoned business. That's something that, well, it was, that, it got zoned into neighborhood business, I think, about ten years ago, because up until that time, it was all non-conforming.
Right, okay.
Everything was.
Okay.
All of that, all the properties that we owned, actually, all the way out to the plaza out there on Salt Point, even the north side part, was, was all non-conforming. So it just, that parcel strip there is access to the rear. There's no other access.
Right, but you would continue to use that for storing trucks?
It's going to be for sale.
Oh, and?
Right now, it's being used by a local business, AFI. And that's where they keep their trailers and actually.
Okay, so those are not your trucks?
No.
Okay, so you've rented that out to some other?
Right, and actually, one of the tenants, the thirty, that's his employer's. So he lives there and watches for him. And, you know, he actually lives in the thirty home, and he's, he's going to, one of the purchasers is getting a mortgage to buy there, so.
Okay.
He's very happy with it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, one, one, one of the puzzles when I first read this is, is, you know, why are you doing all this? Okay, now, now it makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Phyllis, any questions?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Tony?
No, no questions.
Carmen?
Yes, are, are these structured, these houses, are, are they on a slab or is there a basement?
Let's see. One's on crawl space. My father, the full basement. And the other one's fifty-fifty, I believe. It's half crawl space and half basement. And that's the oldest one. That's the thirty.
But none of them are on, just a slab?
Flat slab, no. Not even forty or forty-two. The only thing on a slab is the office, is the commercial offices and garages, which are down on forty, forty-two, which are down further, not the homes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone from the audience wish to address the application on McKinley Lane? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? There's one, there was one recousle. So the public hearing is closed. Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you all.
Okay, item number nine, My Way Home Improvements for Susan and Jim Rothwell, fifteen Marino Road. Okay, if you'd each just state your name and be sworn in.
Lisa Nemec of My Way Home Improvements.
Jim Rothwell.
Mr. Rothwell, Ms. Nemec, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
I do.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so what brings you here?
We are constructing a seven by seven and a half laundry room for Mr. and Mrs. Rothwell. And we are requesting a thirteen-foot variance, which is obviously going into.
Okay, so the, the house currently is twenty feet from the property line?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to go out about seven feet?
About seven feet, yeah.
Okay, all right. Christine?
When we were at the house, the, just looking at it on the left side, it's going to be right in back of where the fence is, right?
It's going to be behind the fence. As you're looking at the house from the road, it's going to be on the left-hand side. At the moment, I have a vinyl fence, a white vinyl fence, like a picket fence, and it's going to be behind that on the side of the house.
I have no questions.
All right.
I have no questions.
Okay. Are, are there going to be windows in this addition?
There's going to be a window which will be on the back side of it, looking in the backyard.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no need to have a window looking at the road.
Right.
Or at the, the side.
Okay.
And there's just going to be, in the room, there's just going to be a washer and dryer and a little cabinet, and that's it.
Okay, Paul?
When we were out there, you mentioned that you were going to change the siding on the house?
Yeah, going to get the house resided.
Okay, you're going to make the addition with the same siding as what you replaced?
The idea was, I was going to do the siding first, and then we got the idea of putting on the laundry room at the side. Then we thought, well, if we get the laundry done first, and then we can side the whole thing in one go, and it'll be much easier.
That's all I have.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application at fifteen Marino Road? Okay, hearing none. There are no further questions in the board. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten, Jamie Ferrari, ninety-three Clark Street.
Good evening, Alfred Capelli Architect.
Mr. Capelli, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, you want to just give us a brief description?
Sure, we have a brick keep guard on the corner of Adams Street and Clark Street. It's currently a full set of stairs going up to the unfinished attic, has a floor, subfloor, if you will. They use it for storage. And the owner is looking to add two, two bedrooms and a bathroom, and by way of adding a few shed dormers. And we understand that even though we're only going up and we're not encroaching, if you will, beyond the footprint of the existing structure, we're still not meeting any of the, I guess, pre, pre-existing setbacks there, so.
Okay. Do you know when the house was originally built?
I do not.
Okay. I wonder, I, I often check these things on parcel access, but I didn't have time.
It says thirty-five here.
Okay, yeah, I think we submitted, so I can look at it.
Oh, you did, oh, oh.
We submitted, it's part of our package.
Ninety thirty-five.
Yes, parcel access, along with a photograph of, of the existing house as well. So I didn't even notice the.
Built in nineteen thirty-five, so that, that was, that would, actually prior to the zoning, I believe. Anyway, okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions. He's on a corner lot.
Yep, Art?
No questions.
Paul?
Nothing.
No questions.
Okay, Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Did, did you want to make any comments?
No, I'll note for the record that the applicant discussed the maximum lot coverage in his application, but in my opinion, since he's not expanding the legal coverage, this board is free to act on the side yard variances and doesn't need to address the lot coverage.
Okay, that's certainly the way I feel about it, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there are no other questions, or anyone from the audience wishes to address the application at ninety-three Clark Street? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recouzles closed. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eleven is submitted by Richard Tandler for Monroe Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just state your name.
Richard Tandler, homeowner for Monroe Drive.
Mr. Tandler, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
I do.
Be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so this involves a deck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you wanna just briefly?
Sure, absolutely, uh, what we're doing in the backyard is, uh, actually having two decks installed, one as well within the variance, uh, without any issue at all off the back of the property, the second one is a much smaller portion coming off of a three-season room is where the variance comes into play, it's a fourteen and a half foot span from the three-season room to the edge of the property line. We're staying within the footprint of the home, just going straight back, although the property line does deviate slightly north from the home and the porch, it's it's at no point gonna be within the twenty-foot requirement.
Okay, um, so in other words, the new deck that you're gonna add in the back is not gonna be any closer to the line than the existing porch is?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Paul?
No.
Tony?
Nothing.
Carmen?
No.
Anyone in the audience, um, wishes to comment on four Monroe Drive? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousles, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Item number twelve, Michael Kistner, uh, is that right?
Yes.
Kistner, yeah, twenty Millbrook Drive, Mill Bank.
Mill Bank.
Phil Bank Road, let me, you know, I managed to get everything wrong, let's, okay, twenty Mill Bank Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have to recuse myself on this one?
Okay. Okay, so, um, Phil is will become the voting member on item twelve, yeah, so if you just, each of you would state your names and be sworn in, please.
Michael Kistner.
Margaret Kistner.
Um, Michael and Margaret Kistner, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so why do you need a variance from us?
We are seeking to install an above-ground pool in a location that is, uh, at the very edge of the property and needs a violates the fifteen-foot setback.
Okay, and if I've got this correct, it's gonna be eleven point three feet.
Eleven point three.
Okay, okay, uh, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
The only question I have is that there really is no screening on the side where you need the variance, are you, um, going, do you intend to put some sort of screening there?
We intend to just wrap, cut the pool into the deck a little bit, so there'll be some screening by the existing railing on that side, other than that, no.
Cause it would seem like even just for privacy for your pool, that you would wanna put something there, some kind of, uh, foliage or?
We hadn't planned on doing anything like that, no, we have a very good relationship with Ms. Dr. Smukla next door, and he's not expressed any concerns about it.
Okay, if we made that a condition, would you be all right with that?
I I think that would depend on the size and the number that you might want, I, what would you be looking for?
We would just be looking for some sort of foliage that would, how high's a pool, four feet?
Fifty-two inches.
So, um.
Yeah.
Four feet.
I don't know, maybe small cedars or something, it's totally open on that side and it usually, yeah, it's usually not that, um.
Problem if you put trees in, that would be the shading.
Yeah, that's true.
Just so you know, the existing deck that we did acquire a variance for, this pool is not going any further than that or the end of the house on that side either. So the pool's not extending any further than the existing house and the existing deck, it's right on that edge.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, um, Philis?
How about me?
Had you given any thought to moving it a little?
We had.
The other side, then you wouldn't be here with us.
We had, the couple reasons for not doing that is, one, if we move it any further into the yard and stay right up against the deck, we're gonna have to take down a couple of large trees. So we'd lose a tree there, if we go, there is room certainly in the back of the yard to go further back, but again, we'd lose trees, large trees, I don't know if anybody went to the site, but you'd lose some very large trees, and the other problem is the water table, as you go any further into the back of the yard, is very sensitive. This time of year, no problem, and when you stay upright as close as we are to the house, no problem, but if you go into the back of the yard, there could be a water table issue. So that's why we've tried to stay up and to that side, we wouldn't be taking any trees down for the pool where we're trying to put it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, Art, my apologies.
You did it on purpose.
I always do.
I had no comments, anyway, for good, thank you.
You you just had to, okay, never mind, Tony?
No comment.
No question.
Okay, all right, um, is there anyone that wishes to address the application twenty Mill Bank Road? Uh, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, uh, Texas Road House, twenty-three twenty-three South Road.
Sworn in, and then I can do it at the scene.
You're already sworn in.
Okay.
Okay, and for the record, you are?
Kelly Leibert with Park Associates.
So that's on the on the tape, thank you.
I have my hat, other hat on, um, there was a bit of miscommunication, I'm not sure if the board knows or not about this application, um, we made an application for variance for relief of one section of the code, and, um, unfortunately, the legal notice misrepresented why I'm why I'm here and inaccurately represented why I'm here, so I am asking the board if I could, um, at least present the application that I intended to present, and the reason is, is I'm here representing Texas Road House, so they asked me to come tonight for them, and as you all probably know, they're under construction, um, on Route Nine, and the light fixtures that I'll explain in a moment are integral to the roof, and so they've wired those light fixtures in, and there's just simply wires hanging out on the top of the roof, and they've left them that way because we don't have the approvals from this board to install those lights. It's very likely that by the next meeting, they'll be ready to open, and so I wanted to at least present this application to the board tonight. I'm hoping to just get a straw poll of the board, um, at the end, to give Texas Road House some direction of where to go, because they need to to, um, get some direction. So this, I think everyone knows where the project is, this was the site plan, um, that was approved by the planning board, the building next to it is advanced auto, in case anyone hasn't seen the site, so Texas Road House advanced auto, and this is Route Nine, Anthony Road is a private drive. This is the elevation that was approved, um, by the planning board, and at the last minute, we realized that these light fixtures that are on the roof, even though they're just little goose neck, um, lights, and they're really intended to provide accent for the roof, they're above fifteen feet, and in your code, you only allow light fixtures to be fifteen feet, so we're seeking a variance for these nineteen light fixtures that are around the building, um, and that's really the intention of the the meeting tonight, I did provide you with, um, copies of those drawings showing the light fixtures. Um, I have done some additional photometric work to illustrate to you, and I can provide that to you as part of the subsequent application to show that the the foot candles, um, don't exceed the, uh, maximum allowed on the property line, so you allow point two lumens up to the property line. Um, our photometric plan was approved by the planning board without these lights on, when you add these lights, we're no greater at the property line, and in some areas inside, it's point two lumens, um, so we don't exceed the requirement, and I can give that to you for next month's, um, submission, if you, um, wanna see that, but that's, uh, the real purpose of the meeting, it's unfortunate that it happened the way that it happened as far as the, um, public hearing notice, uh, but I think we have it corrected at least internally, and hopefully, the next meeting, the board could actually take action. So you know, the planning board did review the application with the lights on, so from a seeker determination, when they prepared their neg deck, it was a complete application, and then these light fixtures were taken off at the last meeting when everyone realized that they were, uh, above the fifteen-feet height requirement, just so I'd say that helps.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we need a bit more in- information here, um, point to where the lights are that you want are going to be.
It's every light fixture, um, that is highlighted in black on this plan, and then I provided you in part of your application a black and white plan, but I could give you this. So it's every light fixture here that's above the roof line, um, on the plan, and I think there's nineteen in total. They're goose neck lights, they're LEDs, they're intended to be accent lighting for, they have different breaks in the roof, so it's intended to be accent lighting, um, for the roof and the flags, so there are, um, four lights that are lighting the flags that are on the roof.
Okay, so those will be pointing up?
Correct, there's one here, one here, and one here, and here, so there's four lights that would be pointing up.
Then the others, when the lights are turned on, we will see what the the lower roof partially illuminated?
That's exactly what it is, I actually have a photo in my bag that I can show you, and maybe that'll help, but you you hid it, which is why when you do a photometric plan for this type of light, it's very difficult, because you take the photometric plan at the ground, and we asked Texas Road House to take a photometric plan of what it would be on the ground, but it really is reflecting on the roof, that's correct.
And the height of the lights is going to be?
Oh, boy.
Um, because the code has has a limit, what, of fifteen feet?
They're fifteen feet, yeah, but I believe that these that are up on the top are nineteen, the ones that are on the floor, the the lights that are on the upper roof are nineteen.
So in effect, you're asking for, what, one one foot?
Four foot, four foot.
And fif- from fifteen to to nineteen?
Four feet.
Four feet.
Okay, four feet, yeah, I could, I mean, that's tough math, but.
We didn't specify, which I can, um, if you want that detailed, maybe for the record, just to know exactly how many lights are at, you know, above the fifteen and how many are at nineteen, so we can put that in a table, so you have that for some documentation after the fact.
Okay, and now on which sides will these?
All four.
All four, even even next to the auto parts?
Well, the one, the side next to the auto parts is this side, so they have goose neck lighting that comes down, that's in between the two buildings, and there's actually an alleyway there, so we would prefer to keep that lighting on the plan, you know, I never really liked this little area here, but it does provide some lighting, um, you know, for that area, we have, there's like a little bench in the front. Yeah.
Okay.
There is a fence, so, again, this is Route Nine, and if you're walking back, there's a fence between the front and the back, because the back portion is more utilitarian, it has the dumpster and some access for Texas Road House and their gas meter, but the front, the planning board had asked us to landscape and make kind of a little park-like setting, there's a bike rack there, there's a bench, so at least at night, if people were there waiting, most of the people, it's interesting, I learned a lot about Texas Road House, but, um, they came and talked to us, and so on average, people wait ninety minutes to get, um, their dinner, and so there's quite an extensive sitting area outside, and then there's another bench over here, in case people wanted to sit over on that side.
Okay, okay, thank you, um, Christine, questions?
You had a photograph that you were gonna show us?
Yeah, let me get that, sorry.
If I had time, I was gonna go to Kingston and see what they had up there.
Be waiting at the bar.
So there's the photo in the back, what it does, just I'll show you at night what these lights were doing.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It might clear it up. And then we also attached in the front of it, it's, you know, they're difficult to read, but we attached the photometric that is, um, just for, simply for those lights.
Yeah.
But this is an, this is essentially supposed to replicate a nighttime light, so you can see that the lights intended are for the the, um, to accent the roof.
What color are the lights, Kelly?
They're white.
They're white.
And I just wanna point out, too, that many of these, in case there's confusion, many of the Texas Road Houses that you see in a lot of the photos that you'll see online, and I think this might have been the confusion with the legal notice, they outline all of the windows and some squares up on the top with, I'll call them rope lights, like neon rope lights, and that's not going on this building, so Texas Road House knew from the beginning that that wasn't approved in this jurisdiction and took them off. So if you go online and you look up lighting and you see those, there's some also around the sign, they're not doing that on this building.
They're not neon?
They're not neon, there's no neon rope lights that you'll see on other photos online, in case you were to look online.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Christine, any, any further, uh, Betty?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Art?
Oh, thank you, um, I do have a question, the the flags, we have never had a restaurant or a building with flags up all the time, I don't believe.
Scott and Chop has them all the time.
On the roof?
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
On the roof or on a pole in front of the place?
No, on the roof, on a pole, because it's, um.
It's American flag.
We made him do that.
I think my question is.
Because it's, um, it has a a satellite or something on it.
Right, it's a separate pole.
They're not, these are just strictly for flags, they're not.
It's, yeah, cell tower.
Not cell towers.
Right.
What do we do about lighting at night, I mean, this building is, all the lights really need to go off at night, what do you do with the American flag, they don't take it down?
You know, the lighting, that's just a recommendation from, that's, there's no statute about lighting on on the American flag, it's just a recommendation.
Okay, but then you got the other flag, which I'm assuming is the Texas flag?
It is, yes, it is.
What do we do, do they?
Texas Road House.
Stay, huh, do those lights stay on all night, what's our call on that one, I mean, how do we?
Goes off when the business closes.
Those lights don't stay on all night for the flags, and I don't believe, as Paul had indicated, that they are required to stay on.
I'm okay with the American flag, it's just. The American flag is supposed to be higher than the Texas flag. It's for truth, it's supposed to be a higher pole.
That is correct.
I'm not coming back to get a variance for that flag. I'll never, they know that.
I guess that answered my question.
Okay.
As long as that's the only one that remains lit at night, not the other one.
Okay.
We're not in Texas.
They're all gonna go off.
No, they're all going off.
I'm okay with the American flag maintaining a light, but the other one, this is not Texas, so we don't need that one.
Well, I I actually have a problem with the 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 flag lights, um, some of my best friends are astronomers, and they have been working very hard, um, to get, um, building codes all over the country, and they would prefer all over the world, um, to reduce the amount of light that's sent up into the sky, um, I mean, not on, not only does it, um, interfere with their research, but it's just wasted energy, and, um, you know, I I would I would hope, and the LED lights, that's a step in the right direction, but I would, I would hope that, the the flag lighting would be absolute minimum, um, you know, to to avoid this, you know, really just waste of 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 light energy, but, um, otherwise.
Would the other choice be not to allow them?
Well, um.
I can find out if there's a shield, I'm sure this isn't the first time that they've been exposed to this, so I can ask them if there's a shield that can go on that limits the light directly only toward the flag, I understand what you're saying for light pollution.
Yeah, that would.
So I can ask them and see if that's something that they can add on those lights.
That would, yes, thank you. Okay, Paul?
Nope.
Tony?
No questions.
Excuse me, on on the agenda, um, it said the use of strip lighting, uh, neon, which which Kelly had had said it is not, um, should that be changed, what we're voting on?
Yeah, um, we're we're not actually gonna, we we can't vote on this tonight, because it has to be read advertised with with the correct description, so you're 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 absolutely right, but what she's asking is, um, But what she's asking is, if we go back, when we go back and re-advertise this, do, basically, she's, she wants us to kind of do a straw vote and, and, are they, are they in the right, going in the right direction? And I think that's fair. I mean, I was out there, and, I mean, the roofs are complete. I think, basically, they're doing interior finish work.
They are, we're actually turning the building over to Texas Roadhouse August twenty ninth for their final fit-up and to start training. So that's why I think the next meeting is September thirteenth. There's a very good chance that by then, they will be doing final training and some soft, some type of soft opening. And that's the only reason now, I could be wrong, that could get pushed. But I know that's when we're turning the building over to them, which is why we're asking for a straw pole. And, and just so there's full knowledge and accountability, the request that I had of the planning department today and the development director is, if it looks favorable that this board would review this favorably, that we will install the lights, and they'll have to be on a separate circuit that are turned off. If, for whatever reason, the board doesn't favorably approve this in September, then the fixtures will be there, but they'll never be put on.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately, I don't, in my twenty-five years doing this, I don't think I've ever asked a board to do this, but we're in a bit of a situation with the construction schedule.
Right, right.
Was there anything from the county?
Yeah, because it was written up wrong. They did, it's not obviously for what Kelly's here for.
Okay.
We did hear from the county, it was a denial, but it was for strip lighting, so it doesn't really.
We're going to recirculate to the county and have a new?
Yeah, so, so we, we may, we may hear something from them.
Correct, yeah.
Were these lights on the site plan that was approved?
They were.
Okay, so then, I think for seeker purposes, we can rely on the site plan that neg deck as opposed to having to treat this as an unlisted, uncoordinated, since the, technically, the environmental issues were already concerned, were addressed by the planning board.
Okay.
Just, well, if we get to that point.
Okay. Let me just ask if there's anyone from the audience that wishes to address the application, Texas Roadhouse? Okay, seeing none. All right, so, I guess we will adjourn this, but before we do that, I think we need to just kind of do the straw vote now. Let's see, you've, you've said you'll, you'll try to keep the flag lights to a minimum, that the flag lights will be turned off when the business closes in the evening.
And I'll provide you with a table of the number of lights and the height, so that we have that for the next application.
So, given all that, how do people feel about this?
Lower the Texas flag. Etiquette, etiquette. Should be a shorter bolt.
It may be, I'm not gonna tell you that it is or it isn't, but again, as.
Sometimes, I mean, sometimes the pole's even only three to six inches lower.
Yeah, they, I'm sure this isn't the first time that they've encountered this, especially in the north. So I will ask and see what I say, yes.
You're suggesting that maybe in Texas?
I'm sort of scratching my head and wondering, now I know why they sent me, yes, tonight to this meeting.
Okay, all right.
I'm okay with the lights, as long as they meet our on-off requirements and are.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
I would be better if, if they had shields.
On the flag lights?
Yes, yes, yep, okay. That, I would feel a lot better if they had the shields, but aside from that.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the nice things about LED lights is that you can kind of focus them and then shield around.
And direct, yeah, yes, okay.
When you say, keeping the flag lights to a minimum, what's the minimum?
I, I don't, I don't know, because it's gotta be enough, I guess, so that you could see it. You know, I, I just can't quantify it.
What I'll do, just to answer your question, is I'll find out exactly what that light is, and we'll get an answer on whether or not we can get a shield. I would imagine that you could, but I don't want to put words in their mouth to try to focus that light just on the flags and not up into the sky.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so.
Is there anyone that has a opposition? I guess I'll ask it that way.
That's the notch of the astronomers.
Yes, correct, I understand.
So, so, so I, I guess, you know, we're, we, I think, in, in general, support this, so.
Okay, very good. So we'll get that information back to you for the next meeting and in time to get the circulation out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to adjourn item number thirteen to Septem- September twelfth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels? Okay, so we're adjourned September twelfth. Okay, item fourteen, Omega Real Estate Holding LLC, twenty sixty-eight South Road. And I'm told that the county has responded that this is a matter of local concern. Okay.
Okay, Kelly Leibl with KRC. This application has been circulating around the town for quite some time. We received planning board approval eons ago, built the new sales building, and went ahead to go receive the permits for the sign and realized that we needed a variance application for the sign for two reasons. So, let's see, try to orient you. This is the side of the building that everyone generally sees, which faces Route nine. And this is the sales building, the BMW sales building on Route nine. That's never really been the face of the building. The face of the building for the clients are when you come in the driveway, and it's the south side, which is this side of the building. And the sign that was up there was on the south side of the building forever. We took the building down, wanted to put the sign up in the same location. This is the plan that was approved by the planning board. So they saw on the architectural elevations that the sign was gonna be on the south side. But when we went to apply for the permit for it, you have to get a variance for a sign that doesn't face a road. So it seems sort of unusual, but the code is the code. So because we don't want to put the sign on Route nine side, but we do want to put the sign on the building that faces internal to the lot, we need to get a variance. I know it makes, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but we're here. The second reason that we're here is this sign, let's see, which one is the best way to show you? Your code requires wall signs to be affixed to the side of a building. And the way this building was construction, or constructed, the intent of the sign was to hang down below. Here's the face of the building. And the sign was intended to hang down below the building. So there's a mount and the sign hangs down. That also requires a variance from the ZBA. And so I provided you with this plan, and this plan, and this little detail on the bottom shows this is the face of the building, and this is the mount that hangs the sign down, so it hangs down below the building. And so we're here to request relief from the code for those two reasons, to put the building, or the sign on the side of the building that doesn't face the road, and to put the building lower than the face of the building. And that's that.
Okay, good. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
No questions.
Art?
I have a question, but just not on this. How, you still gonna have your monument sign out front?
I'm sorry?
Is there still gonna be a monument sign?
It is, it's, it's there. It's been there.
I'm just trying to figure out, they didn't want to put a sign on the Route nine side, but.
Yeah, it's been there, some woman hit it with a car, and then they put it back up in the same location, so it's, it's there.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, Paul?
Is, is there a second wall sign? Is this a second wall sign?
There's not, it's actually noticed incorrectly also, so it's just one.
On, on the agenda, under the, this, in the second one, it should read, town code to permit a wall sign of ninety-seven point five square feet not facing a public road.
Correct, not a second sign, there is only one wall sign.
Delete second.
Okay, then I don't have any.
Okay, Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at the BMW twenty sixty-eight South Road? Okay, seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Closed. Item fifteen, Tinkelman Architecture, uh, for thirty-three Arlington Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening.
So if, okay, let you set your stuff up. Okay, for each, just state your names for the record and be sworn in, please.
Stephen Tinkelman, Tinkelman Architecture.
Jason Litchwick, Tinkelman Architecture.
Mr. Litchwick and Mr. Tinkelman, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Please advise that you are under oath. Any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so, tell us about your project.
Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to discuss a, an issue on a, a building that we've just decided to add to our project that we're building over on Van Wagner and Springside Avenue, which we're calling Van Wagner Place. I hope you had, got an invitation for our ribbon cutting on Tuesday at four, and if you didn't, please let me know, but you were supposedly on the list, you didn't get it?
No. No?
We'll make sure it goes out tomorrow if you didn't get it. But we're having a, a ribbon cutting for Phase Two, which is the housing that we constructed on the corner of Sites and, and Springside. And, and that project kind of influenced this project that we're bringing in front of you tonight. But when we were under construction, we had the sense that we want to do more to that neighborhood to help make it more of a sense of place. And, you know, the, the good news is that, you know, we hope to have a restaurant and bakery opening up in the commercial space in the springtime. And, and so during, during the construction process, we started looking at thirty-three Arlington Avenue. And.
Our site is located right here, it's thirty-three Arlington, this is Van Wagner.
You're gonna have to use the portable mic.
You got it.
Thank you.
So. This here is Van Wagner Road and Arlington Avenue, and our building is situated right here on the corner.
Strange building, it, for forty-five years or so, had been used by Rondad Electric for their offices and their warehouse use. And the lot that was actually facing towards Van Wagner, that's, if you drive by today, it's, it's kind of fenced in, it's got a rusted old fence, and it was used for the storage of all their equipment and large spools of, of wire and things like that. So you can see, it's, it's a real quite attractive building. And we had a funny idea, which is that, and we're, we're beginning to work with the planning board and other, other committees with the town, but we wanted to see if we could improve the intersection of, of Sites and Springside and Van Wagner in a, in a, in a more genuine and complete way. And we thought that one of the things we could do with this building is to turn it around and make the back the front. And so what we're, we're in front of the planning board now, and is to, you know, make this a glass wall and have a new canopy on it. And the, the, the yard itself that was used, you know, for the equipment becomes some parking, and we're redoing the whole outside of the building. Part of what we're planning to do is to, is to try to fix up the whole intersection there. And there's a series of other projects that will follow, and probably be in front of you at some point in time. But we're, you know, we're gonna be talking about new sidewalks, and we're gonna be talking about other ways of making this more pedestrian-friendly. So we're here for a kind of a, you know, an, an odd reason, but it's not so odd because it's law, but if you want to put the rendering up. This isn't the final design, but we're, because we didn't really want to final, get, do the final design till we got a ruling from this, this body, or at least an opinion from this body, in that you can see that we're, we're beginning to, you know, to create a very transparent facade, but we want to make a strong corner on the building. It has that, you know, that rounded roof. And we felt that because of, of the fact that there's a house that's sort of in front of it right now, that, that we don't control, that you don't see this as well as, as you'd want. And so you want to make a prominent architecture, architectural feature on that corner. So what we're here in front of you for is not over the height of this structure. The ordinance allows it to be forty-five feet, it's shown at twenty-five. We'll end up being somewhere between thirty and thirty-two, because we, I think we want a little bit higher than the roof, but certainly below what the ordinance allows. But what, I think the ordinance requires here is that the building is eight feet from its front yard. Again, it has three front yards, so it's an, you know, odd determination as to what the front yard is. And we're skinning the building with some material that we haven't finalized yet, so that we, we're coming out another four to six inches of some material. So thus, that requires the variance of this extra skinning. There's no change to the, the shape of the building or the footprint, there's no additional square footage, correct? Correct. Did I miss anything on that?
Nope, not at all.
Right now, it's not, it's not clear where the street ends and the property line is, and, because it's all just asphalt right up to the building.
And the beautiful part of this is, we've been, again, we met with the Land Use Committee last week, and we've had Mark Pfeifer out there and have talked to different folks about, about other public improvements. And the road there, to your point exactly, is the asphalt from our property line to the other side of the street is about fifty feet. So Mark says he needs twenty-six to thirty feet for a proper road of this scale. So we're now beginning to enter into discussion, because we have a couple of feet on our property that we can donate to do parking on both sides of the road. What we're trying to do is make a, you know, a real nice new, you know, neighborhood with small businesses, and, and frankly, we think we have this building full already with tenants that you'd really like. How this happened, I have no, no clue. You know, it's not done yet, so you hate to say it, but, but, but we think that we're creating some energy over there, the apartments are doing really well. And, and so we think, and this came out of the blue. I mean, it was really one of those funny buildings where it was for sale for a while, and, and they were having trouble selling it. And, you know, Jane Whitman asked me a couple of times whether I'd be interested, and I told them that my wife would kill me if I bought another building. So sure enough, I'm still alive. So anyway, that's the reason we're here, is that we want to construct this tower form, and it does edge out off the surface of the building.
Yep, I mean, my understanding is that the only variance you need really is that front yard setback.
That's correct.
Okay. And I, I understand that the planning board is gonna be the lead agency for the seeker.
Correct.
So we, we can't act on it, but, tonight, but.
Seeker has to be done.
Yeah, yeah. Christine, you have any questions?
No questions, it looks very nice.
Betty?
No question. I always like it when they reuse a building and make it much better than it was.
Art?
No questions.
I mean, just personally, I'm, I'm really struck by this, I, I like it a lot. How ma, how many businesses would, would go in that, that side? I mean, how many doors? It wasn't quite.
Right now, it looks like there'll be three businesses on this side.
Three, okay.
Of about fifteen hundred square feet each. The other side will have an office user. We're looking at probably eight businesses, believe it or not, that are.
Wow.
You know, ready to go, so.
Okay. The, the other thing that I would just, I would just mention for information purposes, and maybe we'll try to get together with you. The Arlington Business Improvement District is working with the county planning, doing a pedestrian study of this whole area. And I know this, this Arlington Avenue and that goofy configuration of Van Wagner and whatever was, was a, a location that they thought could be really improved. And they're gonna be producing a report in the fall, and so we should make sure that you have some input into that.
That's great. We, we actually, you know, think that as you're coming in from forty- That's great. We, we actually, you know, think that as you're coming in from forty-four fifty-five, where Shrek is, that, you know, they're, have a successful operation, but one of the things we could do to mitigate it until something else happens there might be to plant some trees in the front. Maybe there's a sidewalk there, and so we're actually gonna try to, and we'd love to meet, because we'd like to, you know, be involved with some of that.
They, they did a whole lot of data collection. There's a huge GIS file. And they're just in the process of, of coming up with some preliminary recommendations, and we'll make sure that you're, you're part of that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing from me.
Tony?
Nothing.
Carmen?
No question.
Okay, yeah, and I think.
But I, I just wanna say, I, I am impressed with the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, I would just echo Betty's point that, you know, there's an existing building there. It's, it's no work of art, but it's really nice when we can, we can take things that are existing and improve them, and it's, yeah.
It's got great space in there.
Yeah, looking, looking forward to this.
Be good for a party.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will, we will adjourn this to the next meeting. Hopefully, planning board will have acted on it. I understand they're meeting soon.
Next week.
Next week, okay. Okay, so we'll have no problem then on September.
Twelve.
Twelfth, so is there a motion to adjourn item fifteen to September twelfth?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recused? Okay, good.
One question is, do you know if the planning board can, can grant a conditional approval based upon the zoning board's action after the fact?
I.
Contingent.
Well, I could, I, I mean, they, they can issue a conditional approval, and the condition be that the ZBA approved the necessary variances.
They can if they're so inclined, absolutely.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we still have item number six. This was Hudson Valley Building Technology, eighteen Longview Road. Is there anyone here representing the eighteen Longview Road? No, okay. I think the question was raised about the survey and exactly what needed to be done, and so I don't think we have any choice. We have to adjourn this until the next meeting.
I don't see why that's so.
Okay.
There's a survey that says, that lists the property line and the distance to the construction, and there's an allegation from someone that he took a measurement from something from sixty years ago.
Yeah.
So.
Who doesn't have a survey?
Okay, well, what's, what's the board's pleasure? I, I would, I would like to move ahead on this, but, but I don't want it.
I think Paul's right. I mean, the guy gotta notice how long ago, if he could have maybe gone to the county or somewhere to get a record.
Right.
The other issue is, if the board were inclined to grant the variance, the porch has to be eight point seven feet from the lot line. So there, it would be physically, it would be contrary to the variance that was granted for it to be on the lot line.
Yes.
So either the stakes are in the wrong spot, and there will be an issue when the building inspector goes out and does the measurement, or the stakes are in the right spot, and the person who appeared tonight has misinformation, but either way, the building cannot be built pursuant to the variance closer than the footage, so I don't know that you need to adjourn.
Okay. Is that, so is everybody okay with that?
Legal's.
Okay, in that case.
Are, are we gonna go out again to?
No.
No.
No, we're gonna put.
No, I mean, we, we were out there, and, you know, I think all of us, you know, took one look at the existing structure and kind of gasped, and, you know, they're trying to fix up this house, put an addition on it, I'm sure to make it more saleable. I think what, what is being proposed for this is, is, is a good project, but I didn't, I didn't know if we could, you know, legally go ahead, and if we can, I, I would like to, because I know the, that when he was here last time, he wanted to be able to move ahead with the construction, so.
Even if the neighbor came in with a, with a contrary survey, wouldn't change, I mean, we would have to pick which survey was correct, we wouldn't do that, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, so if there's no questions in the audience, if there are no further questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing on item six?
Agreed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will be able to deliberate on that. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearings. Do people want a brief recess, or?
Yes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Okay, we are in recess for five minutes. Will the board please come back into order? We are now in the deliberation phase of our meeting, and as I mentioned, top of the meeting, we will go through the items as they are listed in the agenda, although, let's see, you're here for? Oh, Sherwin-Williams, okay, so our practice has always been, we'll, if, if, if people are present, we will.
Make them wait to the end.
Do them first.
We make them wait till the.
To the very end.
Right.
Because we have to be here.
That's right, and, and, you know, we, we wanna maximize our audience.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so item number three, Conrad Gers-Gessner Jr. for Sherwin-Williams Paint Store, six eighty-four Duchess Turnpike. These are variances, side yard variances to allow for a new building to be constructed on the site. The existing building will be demolished. So the variance would allow the construction of a one-story building six point four feet from the north boundary line and eleven point six feet from the west boundary line, where fifteen feet is required for each, and allow building twenty-five point eight feet from the rear boundary line, where thirty-five feet is required. This is an unlisted action, but it's a coordinated review, and the planning board has issued a negative declaration on July twenty-first. The county has, this is a matter of local interest. There is no staff report. Hmm? What, what, was it from last week?
From June.
From last week, yeah.
Or from, okay, somehow. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, a staff report that recommends that this, these variances be approved. Okay, any questions, comments?
I think that lot is incredibly unique, and I think what they're doing is gonna be less not, make it less non-conforming than it was previously, not to mention less impervious area.
Right, it, yeah, and the, the only residence is on the south side, and there will actually be a greater buffer.
Right, and they're gonna screen.
And they're gonna screen it, so I think that that will improve the situation. Okay, any other comments?
Okay, Christine, you wanna do this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members and the staff report.
Second.
In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Don't stop to.
Second.
No breathing.
Okay.
See, if it's past eight, we're no good.
All right.
You know that, right?
Okay, so the motion been made by Christine, was there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we seconded it to death. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recused, approved, seven zero. All right, and thank, thank you for.
Thank you.
You can still wait, you can wait with us if you want.
I guess, I guess we're down now just to the television audience. Okay, I'm number two. Yes, okay.
That's right.
So item two. SBRJ two, Kumar at twenty-two De LaValle Place, a variance to allow the construction of a second-floor roof located less than one foot from the rear property line, where thirty-five feet is required. So type two action, so there's no environmental. The county has made this a matter of local concern. Oh, it didn't have to go, okay, all right, and there is no staff report, so we'll have to come up with.
Bring it.
With findings, yes. Okay, uh, how do people feel about this?
I, I think it's fine. It's not going past the footprint. The entire building has been up against that property line forever. I think it probably will help him rent out those parcels or that apartment up there. I, if they put some sort of screening there, I, I don't think it will bother the surrounds at all.
Okay, any?
I'm good with that.
There's a, there's a, quite a bit of landscaping there.
Yeah.
There are some mature trees.
Right.
That are there.
If there's an issue, it's up to the landlord to curtail the noise issue, but not us.
Yeah, I think that the hypothetical noise problems.
Right.
Are hypothetical.
I'm, I'm not sure that they're unreasonable, though, to, to worry about that.
Well, quite frankly, if my neighbor barbecues, I can hear them talking, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a hand you?
Whether it was twenty feet or one foot, does it, you know, that's not really what's affecting anything.
All right, um, okay, do we, do we want to put some kind of conditions on this?
Well, one was that, whatever that screening.
Yeah.
They already testified that they would put some sort of screening there.
Okay, along the, the south side.
The south side, right.
So install and maintain?
Okay, we can add that.
Okay, all right. Okay, Betty, you want to...
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant... What was it? No, there is no, I didn't say that yet, did I? Testimony offered in the public hearing and the result of site visits by board members. I would ask that the board use the applicant's application in C1 through 5 as the findings. And I would add that the applicant said that they would install some sort of screening for visual and noise on the second floor.
That must be kept in good repair.
That must be maintained.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? All right, Betty moved it, it was seconded by Art, okay. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousals, okay. The variance is approved, seven zero. Okay, and then, 14, we can do... Okay, this is... Excuse me.
13, right?
13 is adjourned. So, 14, Omega Real Estate Holding, 2068 South Road, this is BMW. Two variances, one, to allow a wall sign that is not affixed flat to the building facade, and two, to permit a wall sign of 97.5 square feet not facing a public road. This is an unlisted action, so I move that for purposes of environmental review of item number 14, that the planning, or the zoning board declare itself lead agent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the ZBA finds, based on the EAF short form, that the action proposed in item number 14 will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, on the application itself, comments, questions?
Yeah, I think the code, you know, contemplates that wall signs will be on the wall, but the architectural design of this one has it hanging. I don't, I don't see that it's, there's any impact really.
And you can't see it except in the parking lot.
It's certainly appropriate for the building.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody know the intent of the requirement, that it be affixed to the wall? I mean...
I think that's why...
Probably so that it doesn't hang out across the sidewalk when there are sidewalks, like on...
Okay, I mean, that bracket arrangement seemed to me perfectly reasonable, but, okay.
Control, I think.
Oh.
For control.
Okay.
Do you have any EAF on the file, in the file for this?
Usually...
Planning board did an egg deck. I don't have that.
That was provided in the...
It was, right?
Oh, oh, they did that on it already? Okay, I didn't know that. I didn't know that, so we really didn't have to go through all of the environmental hoops?
No.
Okay, fine. Okay, excuse me.
It's in there.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's see, the county had no... They were okay with that.
County's okay.
There's, there is, I don't believe there's a staff report, is there?
No, but again, you can use the applicant's answers.
Yes, which is, yeah.
And the supplemental information that goes with it.
Yep, okay, we, okay, we got the environmental taken care of. And, yeah, as part of the application, there's a supplemental information for area variance application that addresses the criteria. Okay. Okay, Art?
You really don't want to do this one?
Yeah.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item 14? 13, no, 14.
14.
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by the board members, and...
And nothing.
No staff report whatsoever.
And nothing, just stop there.
So, you're bossy tonight.
Well, you asked me.
In approving, in approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations in 1-5 of the, oop, doesn't, does not.
Application.
The applicant's application. What else? That's it.
Okay, there is a second?
Second.
Okay, so, item number 14, variances to allow a sign that doesn't face...
Anywhere.
A public road and a sign that is not affixed to the, the building wall. There's no further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousals, okay, approved, seven zero. All right, now, I believe we can go back to item one. Okay, this is for a special-use permit to allow the establishment of an accessory apartment within an existing single-family dwelling. This is an unlisted action, and I don't think anybody else has addressed it, so I guess we have to... Okay, I move that the zoning board of appeal declare itself lead agency for purposes of environmental review of item number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I move that the ZBA finds, based on information in the application and the EAF, that the action proposed in item number one will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousals, okay, and the EAF is attached. Okay, since this is a, a special-use permit, there are a number of criteria that have to be met. And during the public hearing, we reviewed the, let's see, what is it? The 17 specific requirements for a, a accessory apartment. But we also need to consider the general requirements for a special-use permit, and I am trying to find those right now. Okay. Oh, thank you, all right, okay. Okay. Criteria for allowing special-use permits, general provisions, okay. Basis for deliberation, general provisions. Before issuing a special-use permit, the zoning board of appeals shall take into consideration the public health, safety, and welfare, and ensure itself of the following. So, before I do that, let me then put this in the form of a general motion. Okay, all right. I move to approve the request for a special-use permit set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, and testimony gathered during the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members.
Second.
In approving or denying this request for a special-use permit, the board adopts as findings the determinations as follows. One, that there shall be, shall not be any detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district. And the, the board finds that the establishment of a, of an accessory apartment within the existing structure will have no, will make no external changes to the structure. The only external change will be the necessary parking, and the applicant has agreed to reduce the, the extent of the parking, in this case, in the, in the front yard, to the, to the minimum necessary. B, that such use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district, and the location, nature, and, and height of buildings, walls, fences, and parking areas will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land. The, the proposed location, 111 Spackenkill Road, is in an area that's already fully developed. Creating an accessory apartment will have no impact on the further development of the other, of neighborhood properties. C, that all structures, equipment, and materials shall be reasonably accessible for fire and police protection. This is, this is an ongoing requirement and will be addressed as part of the building department's permits. D, that the use meets the prescribed requirements for the district in which located, including minimum yard requirements for the district, which, in which located, or as further specified in this section, and including maximum heights required off-street parking and sign regulations. The, the board notes that these have already been addressed. Okay, then, the second set of criteria have to do with, as I mentioned, the special provisions for the accessory apartment. And the board adopts as findings the determinations that we made for each of the 17 criteria earlier in the meeting. So, move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Yeah, we're going to add some conditions.
What would you propose?
Well, notwithstanding the fact that he said he would reduce the parking to the minimum required, in his diagram, he marked off some, a diagram of delineated parking area and non-parking area. I'd like to see him comply with that. I see that the driveway has recently been sealed, so I think nice painting stripes about where people can't park would be nice. Also, he provided diagrams of how the second bedroom will transform itself into a walk-in closet. I would like to see some detailed diagrams for that, that will be submitted to us and to the building department, and when the building, the department does their inspection, to make sure that that conforms to those specifications.
Okay, I mean, these are all things that we discussed during, during the heating. Yeah, so, this, this is no surprise, so. So, I, I believe that those are three different conditions. Okay, all right.
I thought there were two, but what's...
What's the third? Parking and closet?
Okay, yeah, I guess, okay, parking and the, and the, and the, and the closet, yeah, okay, two, two conditions.
Pretty thick stripes to keep them parking over there.
With spikes.
I like that.
Okay. All right, any other?
So, Art, do you, do you second the amended motion, then?
No.
Okay, so, do we have a second for the amended, the motion as amended?
You don't second the amended? He said, he said, yeah.
I didn't say yes.
Second, I second.
I do not.
Oh, you do not.
Second.
Okay, so, so we have an amended motion to approve the... Special-use permit for creating an accessory apartment at 111 Spackenkill Road. Okay, so, it's been made and seconded, there's no further discussion?
Paul.
Paul.
You said, yeah, sorry, who's the second?
Paul.
Jim and Paul.
Okay. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
And recousals, okay, so, approved, six, one. Okay.
It's been on the agenda, it's everywhere.
No, that takes us to item...
Four.
Four, okay. All right, this is Paula Young Bora, 2186 New Hackensack Road. This is the Paula's Place Restaurant. A variance to allow a freestanding sign of 24 square feet in size and 11.5 feet in height, supported by a single steel beam, where a freestanding sign shall not exceed four square feet in size, shall not exceed eight feet in height, and where the use of exposed I-beams and steel beams to support a freestanding sign is prohibited. This is an unlisted action, so I move that, for purposes of environmental review of item number four, the zoning board declares itself lead agent.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, I move that the ZBA determines, based on the application and the environmental assessment review, that the action proposed in item number four will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, okay, on the motion itself, the county, of course, has recommended that be denied, and the staff report also recommends that this be denied. So, we need a supermajority, five votes, to approve this, and we have to explain to the county the reasons for our decision. Okay, so, first of all, how do people feel about the, the proposal as amended? So, they're, they're now talking about a sign that would be shorter than what were they originally proposed. And they've also agreed to a number of conditions, so. So, on, on the general idea of a, a freestanding sign, a or nay?
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think it...
I don't think there's an alternative.
Yeah.
I don't think there's...
Monument side.
I think the monument side blocks traffic view...
Yeah.
Dangerously. You can't, the way the roof line is there, you, you can't really put a sign, it's too far back. I, I think, I think this is her only option.
Okay, so...
And I think a four-square-foot sign, and you're right, I was surprised to realize it was still zoned, is absurd for that, for that business.
Right, I mean, having a four-square-foot sign in, in a residential area where the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, and it's, you know...
Right, right.
But this is such an odd...
She testified that they would dress up the, the...
They're going to encase the pole.
They'll...
Yeah, and I, I think we should make that an explicit condition, because that removes a number of the objections of...
They're going to shorten the pole slightly.
And they've reduced the side, the, the height of it. And I do think the design works, and it's so much better than the old sign that was there, the neon.
And one of the county's objections was that it was intrusive. I, I, I don't agree with that. I don't believe the, the sign is intrusive.
Okay.
Because the sign has been there for many, many years with a different business.
Okay, so, um, okay, so, let's... Okay, so, um, okay, so let's, I don't know, but Paul, do you want to do this, or you want me to do it?
Oh, no, you go ahead.
Okay, 'cause what we've, what we've, I, I think, I, I.
I'll second it.
I think we, yeah, I think we've got this pretty well. I, I think there's a clear consensus here, and for, and we have a pretty good sense of, of why this, this variance makes sense. Okay. I move that the Board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number?
Four.
Four. This decision is based on review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the amended staff report. In approving this variance, the Board adopts as findings the determination, the amended, the determinations found in items one through five of the amended staff report. The approval of this variance is subject to the following conditions. One, that the maximum height of the sign shall not exceed, I believe it's 12 feet. Isn't that what they said? It's gonna be.
Oh, I wrote it down. It's 71.
Inches above the ground.
Seventy, 72 inches above the ground?
For the application.
That's the bottom of the sign. 133.4 inches is the height.
Oh, they brought it down.
They brought it down a little bit from that.
That's 11 feet, one and a quarter inches, the 133, and I thought that's.
And that's what he said it was, that's.
Right, because then the sign is four feet, and that gives you seven.
That gives you seven-foot clearance underneath. Okay, so the, so the maximum height is going to be?
133.4 inches.
133.4 inches, okay. The second condition is that the steel pole be encased in some kind of wood enclosure.
Does not do wood.
Decorative.
Decorative. Has to be something that's not round. It can't be round.
Okay.
Square. Could be PVC, could be wood.
Well, and it, yeah, and it can't be metal. So, okay, so, so the, the, the existing pole be clad in some non-metal decorative enclosure. And three, that the base of the pole be landscaped.
Second.
Okay.
He's second.
Okay.
Should we just add in there that this determination was made after a mock-up presented by the sign company?
Okay, I think, let, let me, let me look at the, I'm, I'm turning now to the staff report, and we're gonna, we're gonna amend this. Okay, so, one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood.
No.
Or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The Board finds that the, the proposed sign, as modified by the conditions, will not produce a detriment to nearby properties. We note that one of the neighbors has testified that the proposed change will be beneficial to the, to the neighborhood. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The Board finds that there are no reasonable alternatives, that a monument sign would pose a safety hazard, and that the existing building is unsuitable for wall or projecting signs. Whether the requested area variance is substantial? The, the variance is substantial from the point of view of signs that are allowed in an R-20 district. The Board notes that Route 376, in, in the site, in, in the location of the proposal, is a, is a highway and not a residential street, and the speed limit is 45 miles an hour, and the sign that's being proposed is, in fact, appropriate for, for roads that have that volume of traffic and at those speeds. Four, whether the proposed variance would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The Board finds that the proposed sign will actually be less adverse and have less impact than the sign that existed there for many, many years. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? It's self-created in the sense that the applicant is seeking to put up a sign. The Board notes that there has been an existing sign there for many years, and, and that there are very few alternat, there are few or none alternatives to what is being proposed. So move.
Second.
Okay, so, we, we did it in kind of a funny order, but basically, we have a proposal for the sign subject to a number of conditions. Okay, any further comments, additions to that? And I believe in our, in our deliberations, we've, I think, addressed the issues that the county raised, so we can, I think we can draft a response. And I think I would focus on Paul's point, that there are really not many alternatives, and also on the fact that this, this.
It's unique in the zoning.
Yeah, it, it's, it's zoned residential, but in fact, it's, it's, it's a, it's a unique piece of property.
And not likely to be replicated anywhere in that zone.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Okay, if there's no further comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recousals? Okay, approved seven, zero.
Sandy, who do you have for the second on that?
I have Paul.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Okay, item number five. This is Mohinder Mangat, 47 Sights Place. This is a variance to allow a proposed deck to be located nine feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. It's a type-two action, so there's nothing further we need to do. Any comments, questions? I think we adjourned this so that we could get the public notice corrected.
And Brian was, of the check-in, like he said he would.
Yeah, I think, I think this is pretty straightforward. Paul, you get to do this.
Sure. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of the visits by the board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the Board adopts as findings determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. And just to confirm that it's a variance for nine feet?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve item number five. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals? Approved seven, zero. Item six, Hudson Valley Building Technology, 18 Longview Road. This is a variance to allow a home addition to be located 8.7 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Type-two action. There's a staff report recommending that this be approved. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, only that there was an issue about the proper lot line. The applicant has a survey, and a neighbor, a property, a jetting property owner disputes that, but without any other evidence. So I think based upon the evidence before us, we're able to vote.
Okay. I, I agree. Any other? Okay, Tony, you want to do this one?
I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings and the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. And the approval of the variance is sub, subject to the finally following conditions as, follow the staff recommendations for, I guess, as the property is improved, that the landscaping be approved in, or improved in accordingly.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Item number six, been approved, and, or the approval of item number, variance in item number six has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals? Approved seven, zero. Okay, item number seven. Arnco Sign Company on behalf of Capstone Plaza, 15 Burnett Boulevard, otherwise known as the Big Lots Sign. And this is a variance to allow a wall sign of 143 square feet, where a wall sign of 100 square feet is permitted. This is an unlisted action. There is an EAF. Okay, so I move that the zoning board of appeals declares itself lead agency for the purpose of the environmental review of the item number seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I move that the ZBA finds based on the application and the environmental assessment, that the action proposed in item number seven will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, again, this is a case where the county has recommended this be denied. There is no staff report, so we can, we'll have to supply some findings. Okay, I, I, I think based on, on the public hearing, we made it pretty clear that they don't need this variance.
I was surprised that he didn't just withdraw the application. I, I almost wonder if he didn't know he could do that.
My guess is that Texas Roadhouse didn't want him to withdraw it on the off chance that the Board would allow the 120.
No, 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 this is Big Lots.
Big Lots.
Oh, well, the same, the same.
Yeah.
That, I think his, the corporation didn't want, on the chance that they would get the 120.
Yeah, they had nothing to lose, so.
Yeah, they're here.
And I, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna mention it during the public hearing, but then I thought, this guy probably doesn't have the authority to make that decision.
So, do we have to deny this, and then he can put up the 100 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think this is just a straightforward vote to deny. Right? Okay. Okay, um, let's see, we're gonna have to, um, let's, so we're gonna have to come up with some kind of findings. Okay, well, tell you what, Carmen, why don't you just start this?
Okay.
Start it out, we'll, then we'll, we'll improvise.
I, I move that the Board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered, offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report.
Okay, so.
In denying this variance, the Board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
There is no staff report.
Okay.
Yeah, we, is it okay to just say that we're denying it because the, the size of the sign that is allowed by code is perfectly substantial? And, and probably more visible because of the, the color that it is than the sign that's there already? I mean, we have to, is that good enough, or do we have?
Well, the implication is that because the existing, you have to grant the least variance, the, the smallest variance to enable the purpose that the applicant needs, and what you're basically saying is that there is no, the, the, without the variance, the applicant can get its needs met, so therefore that's the overriding concern.
There you go.
Okay, so, all right, those are, that, that's our finding. Okay, so.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so Carmen has made the motion, there's.
Second.
Paul.
Paul's seconded to deny the variance requested in item number seven. Okay, so, an a vote is, is a vote to deny. So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recousals? Okay, the item number seven is denied by a vote of seven, zero. Okay. Item number eight, TLP Associates, for 30, 32, 34, and 40-42 McKinley Lane. Oh, and Paul is recusing himself on this one. Okay, uh, all right, there are a number of, of variances here. One, for 34 McKinley, variance to allow a shed to be located five feet from the rear property line and eight feet from the side property line where 10 feet is required. The second variance for Lot 5, 40, 42 McKinley, to allow a shed to be located four feet from the side property line where 10 feet is required. And three, variances to allow the creation of lots of 7,158 square feet, Lot 1, 7,273 square feet, Lot 2, and 6,413 square feet, Lot 3, where a minimum of 15,000 square feet is required for each lot. This is an unlisted action, but the planning board is the lead agency, and they've issued a negative declaration on July 21st, so there's no further action that we need to take there. There's no staff report, so we will have to generate some findings on this, though I note that the, in the application, on page two, there is a justification for requesting an area variance that addresses the five criteria for issuing a variance. And basically, the, the sum and substance of those findings are that this is a pre-existing situation, and that the requested variances simply kind of rationalize and standardize the existing situation.
And that they took six parcels down to five.
Yeah. Okay, so, any comments? All right, if not, I guess we're back to you, Christine.
I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and items one through five of the application.
Second.
All right, motion to approve the variances in item number eight made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And there's one recusal. Okay. Actually, it's approved seven, zero. Yeah, period.
Oh, okay.
Okay, item number nine. My Way Home Improvements. My Way Home Improvements for Susan and Jim Rothwell, fifteen Marino Road. This is a variance to allow a proposed laundry room addition to be located twelve-point-five feet from the side lot line where twenty is required. It's a type-two action. There is a staff report recommending that this be approved. I don't think there's a problem with this, does anybody have any? Okay, okay, Betty.
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. I would ask that the board adopt as findings the determinations as found in one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded to approve variance in item nine. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, approved, seven, zero. Item ten, Jamie Ferrari, ninety-three Clark Street. This is a variance to allow a home addition to be located twelve feet from the front lot line, or the north front lot line, twenty-five feet from the east front lot line, because it's a corner, where thirty feet is required for both. And two, be located five feet from the south side lot line where twenty feet is required. It's a type-two action, there's a staff report recommending that this variance, these two variances be approved. Any discussion? If not, Art?
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on a re-
Yes.
-review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five, staff report.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve the two variances in item number ten made in seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels, approved, seven, zero. Okay, item eleven, Richard Tandler, four Monroe Drive. A variance to allow a proposed deck to be located fourteen-point-five feet from the side lot line where twenty is required. Type-two action, and there's a staff report recommending that this be approved. Any discussion? I think it's a case where this is not gonna be any closer to lot lines than the existing structure, so the impact will be minimal. Oh, it's me, okay. How about that, okay. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number eleven. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels, okay, approved, seven, zero. And just, by, by the way, excuse me for the hacking that I've been, I just got back from North Dakota, and it's harvest season in North Dakota, and my allergies went totally bunkers. So I'm still trying to, so my apologies. Item number twelve, okay, and so, Paul, you're recusing yourself. This is Michael Kister, Kistner, twenty Millbank Road. This is a variance to allow a proposed above-ground pool to be located eleven-point-three feet from the side lot line where fifteen feet is required. This is a type-two action. There is no staff report, so we will have to create some findings. Let me see, is there anything in the application? Not really. Okay. Okay, discussion? I think during the, during the public hearing, pretty clear this is not gonna be any closer to the lot line than, than the deck already is. And that given the lot, there are some real limitations on where a pool could be located. Directly, at the, at the back of the property line is, is the Casper Kill. And that really, the, the, the wet ground really limits what, what the applicant could possibly do. So, if there are no other comments, Phyllis, your turn.
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance in item number twelve. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits made by board members. And, and the discussion at the meeting, do you want me to review all five?
Well, okay, let, we, we can run through this quick. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The board finds that the proposed action, namely building or installing a pool, is consistent with the neighborhood, and that the location of the pool will be no closer to the side lot line than the existing deck structure. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method other than an area variance. The board finds that because of the nature of the lot, there are very few places where a pool could be located. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. With the, the request is to locate eleven-point-three feet where fifteen feet is required. So, it, it, this is not a substantial request, and as noted before, is, is no closer to the side lot line than the existing deck. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The, the board finds that it will have very little impact on physical conditions. Five, whether the difficulty was self-created. It is self-created in the sense that he's seeking to install a new, a new pool. It is, it is not self-created in the sense that he, he has very, very limited options for other locations. So move.
Second.
Okay.
Do you wanna add anything about the shrubs? Where did we leave that with them?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
There was no requirement.
Yeah, I mean, the, the testimony was that the existing deck-
Covered it a little.
Yeah, and that it, it hasn't caused any problems, and so, you know, apparently the neighbors have this worked out, so-
And they were reluctant to do it.
Yeah, so, yeah. Okay, so, motion has been made and seconded to approve the variance requested at twenty Millbank Road. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, so approved, seven, zero, and we note that Paul had recused himself. Okay, item thirteen has been, this is Texas Roadhouse, that's been adjourned. Item fourteen, that was the BMW, that has been approved. Item fifteen, Tinkelman Architecture, that has been adjourned. We now have three requests from the planning board, that they serve as the lead agency for three different projects. One is the Tinkelman Proposal at thirty-three Arlington Avenue, we've already discussed that. The second is the Young Subdivision at twenty Center Avenue. What is that?
What is this?
Young-
Well, that's coming here.
What is it?
It'll be here.
I'm not sure exactly where it is.
I think it's on East Cedar.
It is, you know where it's across from?
He's been here before.
He came up, he wanted it.
The one, is that the one behind?
Thanks, but he didn't take down.
It's up on the hill behind, William.
Okay, all right, yeah, across from Inwood, yeah.
Right, he wants to, he wanted it to family.
Right.
Right.
I think that's the part.
He wants to subdivide it.
Okay, so apparently there's a new proposal.
I think that's-
This, this is, this is-
They're coming after.
Okay, but as, in, in terms of the environmental review, the planning board wants to do that. And also for the Germano property at twenty-five fifty-five South Road, we've-
It's back.
We, yes, it's back, right, and it's-
It was on for about-
There's, there's certain kind of zombie proposals. So I, I move that the zoning board of appeals approve the request by the planning board to serve as the lead agency for the environmental review of thirty-three Arlington Avenue, twenty Center Avenue, and twenty-five fifty-five South Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. I'm, I note with some satisfaction that we have cleared a number of items that had been adjourned. I believe we've only got two that we're adjourning to the next meeting. Nice going, folks, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.